Do we have our mics on? We're all good. All right, so I want to call to order the January seventeenth Atherton City Council meeting. I guess we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand.
They can't hear online.
Anthony, do you need a minute for the roll call? Because I would like to, I'd like to open our meeting up and propose that we have a moment of silence in honor of Jim Massey, who's been a longtime member of our community, very active. And he was, let's see. He's been on the Audit and Finance Committee for many years. And he's been attending many of our meetings. We all know him and we'll miss him dearly. So let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Anthony, you want, are you ready for the roll call?
Councilmember DeGolia? Councilmember Holland?
Here.
Councilmember Widmer? Vice Mayor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Hawkins?
Here.
Thank you.
So we, yeah, I'm going to move a little bit fast because we have a lot of stuff to go through tonight. So first, we have a HIP Housing presentation. Or is that, oh, you're here. There you are. You're here.
I just have a few words, so not a big presentation at all. Hi, my name is Carolyn Moore. I am a proud board member of HIP Housing and have been that for about six years. So excited to be coming to talk to you tonight about something fun. Since nineteen seventy-two, HIP Housing has been helping low-income San Mateo County residents to find and maintain housing in one of the most expensive places to live in the country. HIP Housing is listed in all twenty-one housing elements in San Mateo County, including yours, as a trusted affordable housing partner. Last year, we worked with over three thousand two hundred individuals and housed one thousand two hundred forty-one people throughout the county. And we have been partnering with the town on outreach activities to encourage Atherton homeowners with ADUs to utilize our home sharing program to find a renter. This partnership not only helps the town reach the affordable housing goals, but also provides stable housing for members of our community. On behalf of HIP Housing, I'd like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the Atherton Town Council for your enduring support of our organization. And as a symbol of our appreciation, we would like to present you with HIP Housing's twenty twenty-four calendar. This is one of the best things we do all year. So each year HIP Housing asks children from all around the county in grades kindergarten through fifth to draw a picture of a home and tell us what home means to them. And this year, we had over three hundred and twenty calendar entries from these, from these kids, and we selected thirteen winners. So one for the cover and one for every month in the calendar. So I just want to share with you what my favorite one is here. So this is the month of November. Maybe it's my favorite because my birthday is in November. Maybe it's my favorite because our artist is Zoe and she's from Belmont. And I grew up in Belmont. But I think maybe one of the best reasons is what she said about her, her drawing. She said, "My home means being safe. It's a nice place to live in. It also means I'm lucky because some people are homeless. It also means feeling safe is important." And I love that. How articulate for a third grader. So really great stuff that we, we tend to get. And so we hope that you enjoy this calendar and that it serves as a lovely reminder of our partnership and what we do with, along with you, and how important housing is to everyone in the county, especially our children. So if you need more information about what we do, obviously, I'm here. But HIP Housing's website gives you all kinds of information. And if you'd like more information on the calendar or to get more calendars, you can get it there. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your work.
Anthony, yeah, that'd be great.
Right, thank you so much.
Hey, Anthony, we're getting a lot, like, we're hearing the voice coming back over here. Is there a way to mute that?
You gotta shut down your microphone.
Yeah, because I was hearing an echo on the voice coming from there.
No, I don't, I don't.
It's only on this one. Yes, it's mute. I don't know what else. Sure. No worries, no worries. All right, so next on our agenda was a presentation by Park and Rec committee. But I don't think Alex is here, right?
He's going to come a little later and then hopefully he'll be able to present.
We'll just work him in. Okay. So next on the calendar is a proclamation for Sandy Critten. And is he here?
Yeah, he's in the back.
There he is, okay. All right. Bringing up the town of, you want to come up to the microphone?
I want to go over by you. You want to go down there?
To read it? I can't read it from the mic right here?
No. You'll get it down here. There's a mic right there.
You can do this.
Nice to be right next to you.
Yeah. Likes it. He loved it when he was Santa Claus.
Thank you. Oh, look at that. The microphone and everything, wow. And you're going to get a nice framed over there. Read it. "The Town of Atherton Proclamation in recognition of Sandy Critten for his contributions and commitment to the Friends of the Atherton Community Library. Whereas Sandy has been a lifelong town resident, attended Menlo Atherton High School, and earned a Boy Scout Eagle Badge along the way. Mr. Critten, committed to community and public service, has developed through his family's history of civic engagement. Whereas Sandy has served on the Friends of the Atherton Community Library for over twenty years and served as a president for eight years. Whereas Sandy also served as a president and treasurer of Holbrook Palmer Foundation for over twenty-five years and played a pivotal role in major projects at Holbrook Palmer Park, including repairs at the Glenn Merrill Carriage House and Water Tower. Whereas Sandy has a robust history of volunteerism and charitable activities, have served food at the Menlo Park Holiday Breakfast and at Ronald McDonald House for thirteen years, and contributed to charities such as the Peninsula Family Services Agency, Silicon Valley Foundation, and the Menlo Park Rotary College Scholarship Foundation, to name a few. Now, therefore, as Mayor of the Town of Atherton and on behalf of the Atherton City Council, I hereby recognize an outstanding citizen of Atherton, Sandy Critten, for his tremendous commitment to volunteerism and charitable work and the Friends of the Atherton Community Library and other local efforts." Thank you. Thank you for your.
We got a little one.
Yeah.
Well, of course. I always love pictures.
Perfect. Three, two, one, I took five. Without your glasses, okay. Awesome.
And the proclamation didn't talk about the clock. And the city is totally responsible for the maintenance and preservation of the clock out by the train station.
Take a fifteen-minute recess.
I'd like to invite Kristen to pave it up.
We're going to take a fifteen-minute recess.
And we're, all right, we're going to have a fifteen-minute recess, so in fifteen minutes, we're You guys are going to get me in trouble.
Yep.
You're going to get me in trouble.
I can't actually drink.
Ready, I'm ready.
Give it two minutes. Before I finish my cake. I will be cutting it short. It's not a full fifteen minutes.
Pulling consent item four for just a quick comment.
Okay.
Why am I eating this cake? It's good, though. Yeah, cake is good. I don't think it's diet cake.
No. It has fruit in it, so, you know.
Yeah, it does have fruit in it. That's good.
Yeah.
Where'd my glasses go?
I agree with that. I had it said earlier. Hopefully, it'll keep them quiet.
Yeah, because I was getting all these letters from the emergency services thing. Tell me, they're having dinner, they want me to know what I wanted.
No.
In fact, I got like three in a row.
Yeah, we'll get this out of your way.
Am I on that?
Is that from the PD walkthrough? I got that one, too.
Oh, no, not that one. This was the emergency services of county.
Yeah.
Yeah, the PD walkthrough, I ordered. Although the salad looked pretty good.
Can't make it.
Oh, you can't, oh, it's a shame.
I'm sad to miss it. I have three weeks to prepare. Doesn't that toddler going behind the scenes that?
No, that's probably not a good idea.
Not the moment.
George is draining his champagne.
You ready?
Carol's here, so it's going to be a while. I buy for you, I hit the gavel.
I want to call back to order. I know I said fifteen, but we're going to cut it a little bit short because we have a lot to do tonight. So I want to reopen the meeting for public comment. Do we have any public comments? This is our opportunity to address the council on any matters not agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
We do.
Good evening, council members. Just setting my timer, just in case. Oh, there we go. Yeah.
I know.
Champagne. My name is Margie Power and I am co-president of Leadership Council, San Mateo County. And I'm here with my co-president, Karen Hardy, and one of our board members, Laurel Miranda, who is an Atherton resident. And we are here to share more about Leadership Council, San Mateo County, with you and specifically to invite you to consider becoming a city partner of ours. We currently have seven city partners. And we were founded three years ago. We decided to start this organization to invite leaders from the government, nonprofit, and business sectors to come together to learn about what is going on in the county and help solve some of our biggest challenges. So we run two programs, two ten-month leadership programs. One is called Leadership Core for senior-level leaders, elected officials, senior city staff, private sector C-suite executives, and nonprofit executive directors. And then we have another program for rising stars called the Emerging Leaders Program. And that includes people from early in their career to mid-career. And they're both ten months long. And our goal is to infuse them with the civic knowledge, leadership skills. We have a transformational coaching team that teaches leadership skills and relationship building. So to really strengthen relationships across the county as we tackle our biggest challenges such as housing, climate change, et cetera. And there's lots of ways for Atherton to consider becoming a partner. The easiest one is to consider sending some people through the program. And we also have an elected leaders program. Happy to see Councilmember Holland here. She participated in our newly-elected leaders training last spring. And I'll turn over the microphone to Karen, who'll share more about that program.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much for the opportunity to give public comment. One of the, as Margie mentioned, we are a county-wide program and we, we represent those three sectors and we represent all twenty cities in San Mateo County. So right now, in our programs this year, we have seventeen of the twenty cities represented. And that includes anyone who lives or works in that town. And so really having that cross-sector and county-wide conversation and relationship building, we've seen phenomenal results. And I know Laurel's going to mention her experience with the program. And, and we've also seen, for example, with our senior leaders group, we had a private sector, one of the major companies within San Mateo County, partner with the Juvenile Justice Commission, who had a representative in the class, and, and a nonprofit ED who's in the class, to, to bring Peer Point Program to Menlo Atherton High School, which is a program that, I think that was your three-minute. Oh, sorry, that's, sorry. Which is a program that tries to reduce the expulsion rates within the school and really provides peer support and mentorship for kids at Menlo Atherton. So that's an example of something that would impact your community. And as Margie mentioned, we have a couple of upcoming events. So in addition to our Leadership Immersion Programs, we have events for the community that offers professional development to the community, to community members. One is we have a strengths-based leadership program coming up. We partner with a Gallup consultant who talks about using your strengths and your leadership roles. We have several, and we have some elected leaders who are attending that as well. And then we also have, we are launching with the help of Silicon Valley Community Foundation, an elected leaders program, which provides professional development for elected leaders as a San Mateo County cohort. So it's only, it's only, there's lots of other ways that you're meeting as a region and also there's, you know, there's opportunities to meet in the county. But this is really to do professional development for elected leaders. And we bring in, we, we bring in experts to do that work. And any other events I'm missing that are coming up?
The elected leaders training.
Yes, oh, and elected, yes, so that, that's the elected leaders training. And we have, and then our applications open in March. We have, as I said, we serve all twenty cities. We do have official city partners, which include, we have seven city partners and we also have, the county of San Mateo is also a partner. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome work.
Hi. As Margie and Karen said, my name's Laurel Miranda. I have lived in San Mateo County for over thirty years. And I've had the pleasure of living in Atherton and Lindenwood for the last seven. I'm also fortunate enough to spend most of my time being a community volunteer. And I'm currently the Board Chair of Curiosity, which is a hands-on science and museum and zoo and Coyote Point Recreation Area just east of San Mateo, along the bay. And I've done that for the last five years. Our mission at Curiosity is to inspire a love of science and curiosity about the world to create a brighter future. And I'm also a founding board member of Leadership Council, San Mateo County. What I really like about this organization is it brings together folks like me from the nonprofit world, together with business people and government people like yourselves. And the synergy that comes from these cross-sector relationships that are formed, you know, just casually in classes or in meetings, it's really amazing. And I just wanted to give you an example from my own personal experience. I've had the chance to meet repetitively with the head librarian from East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, San Mateo County Library System. And we were always just discussing how great it would be if kids, his library kids, could come to Curiosity and vice versa. Maybe Curiosity could come to the library system. So we've had many discussions that then we kind of kicked it up to our managers and to our staff at Curiosity. And we have the beginnings of a partnership where staff from each of the organizations have met and we've visited each other's sites and with the intent to do this cross-pollination where their kids can come to Curiosity and maybe we can bring animals or other enrichment to their libraries. And then, you know, obviously, that, that benefits East Palo Alto, but it also benefits Atherton because, you know, right there across, across the breezeway. So I just invite you to learn more about our organization and how it might benefit Atherton. And I would be really especially honored if you would consider coming to either yourselves or staff to observe our Environmental Impact Education Days for either the corp or the emerging leaders. They will be held at Curiosity in April and I would love to see you there and welcome you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very interesting. Have some information we'll leave with.
Please do.
Laurel, I took my grandson to Curiosity on Friday. He loved it.
Did you have a chance to see our Illumin Odyssey?
Yeah, awesome. Yeah. Also remember, it's amazing.
Thank you, thank you for promoting our organization. We really appreciate it and we look forward to all the children of Atherton coming to visit Curiosity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Do we have any, any more, any online, Anthony? No. Okay, I'm going to close out the public comment. Does, do any of the council have a disclosure of ex parte communications? Nope. Okay, so next is department written reports. Does anyone have any clarifying questions or comments on the? Are there any public comments on written department reports? No. Okay. All right, I'm going to move to the consent agenda, which is items one to five. Does anyone on the council have an item that they would wish to pull or discuss? Yes, Bill?
Item four.
Okay. Do you want to pull it or do you want to discuss it? Do you have questions or?
No, I don't have any questions. I have comments.
Okay, shall we just address them now? You, you don't want to pull it, do you?
Well, why don't you see if anybody in the public wants?
Does anyone in the public have any thing they want to pull or any comments? And none online, Anthony? No, okay. So you're it.
Okay, I brought this up in December. And, you know, Mona indicated, oh, yeah, well, there's other references in there. So I spent the time and went over during the Christmas holiday, the agreement. And, and there were some, some, S-O-M-E capital, clarifying locations, but, but I still have many concerns. And I think that it could have been made clear about the items that I brought up. So on a vote on this, I will remain a no. I know that the rest of you all voted for it, but I do think it's important that you have a clear contract and a clear way of working that anybody can understand and not have to go through the appeal process to finally get it resolved and, and pay a fee associated with it, which are the same comments I brought up back in December when you became mayor. So I will be a no on this. And I really wish that some of you might have gone back through it and maybe chimed in, but I, I know it was four to one. So I, I accept that, but I'll be a no. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Only, I have a comment on item one, which I, I have given George a typo change, which, which he accepted. But given Councilmember Widmer's comments, if in fact he voted against this item in December, the minutes show that he voted for it.
I did vote against it.
So that will need a minute change. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a change.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I think we should vote on the control ordinance separately.
Hold on a second, the city attorney's got a comment. I think his comment is you need to extract item number four. Vote that separately.
Do it as a group and I'll just identify. I am going to. Okay.
All right, so we're, we are going to pull item four then and vote on it separately. Should we do that first?
I'll, I'll modify my motion to be items one, two, three, and five.
And I'll make a second to that motion.
And we also still need public comment on the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll go to item four.
And that'll be a roll call vote, right?
Is that a roll call vote or do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item four as stated.
Second.
A roll call vote, I guess?
No, you can do it.
Just a vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, unopposed.
Okay.
A motion passes.
The motion passes.
Of course.
Okay, now I'd like to open the public hearing section of our meeting. The first item is number six. Review and discussion of the town's user master fee schedule. And if appropriate, provide direction for specific adjustments and adopt Resolution twenty-four XX, approving and amended town master fee schedule. And I believe Robert's going to give us, the birthday boy's gonna.
Thank you, Mayor, council members of the public. Yes, at our December sixth study session, the council reviewed our user fee study. The study included a process of cost allocation plan or hourly rate of calculation on user fees revolved around the establishment of fees designated, designed for full-cost recovery where appropriate and the calculation of the building permit fee. Says full costs associated with services. Process included understanding each task at the operation level and identifying tasks involved in the core process, business processes, provided services. Primary focus was on our development services fees, building, planning, and engineering. Core processes included our pre-application review, our application intake, and our plan check and inspections. The fee study analysis within the staff report, our fees charged by the town based on full-cost recovery provided in the user fee schedule is the total signed cost per service and the actual fees being charged. The study revealed that if costs to provide the service exceeded the fee charged, there'd be a unit surcharge or subsidy. Staff recommends that fees be set as close to a hundred percent cost recovery as possible within the fee schedule. The user fee study last, was last performed in two thousand thirteen. Increases were only done by CPI index in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-two to reflect CPI adjustments. During those times, no changes were made to the valuation-driven fees, of flat fees for building and plan check fees. These have remained constant since two thousand thirteen. Specific services, most of these fees in the town fee schedule are for specific services as they are specific to an individual group that benefits from the regulated use. This was written in the staff report. There are development services are, again, our engineering, planning, and building departments. These services provided are regulated activities which require compliance with government codes and regulate private development. These are high-demand services, setting fees at full-cost recovery seeks to recover the cost of services provided to the, those receiving the private or individual benefit. Reminder, any services provided by the town where their fee is set below of the full-cost recovery results in public service provided for private benefit that is subsidized by town public funds. So there are several policies for consideration. During the study session, the council has provided opportunity to identify areas for cost recovery and areas of public policy consideration. Staff provided broad guidance on options for setting cost recovery. And council members were recommended to submit fee suggestions for specific fee adjustments that could be consolidated and presented to the council here at this public hearing. One of the policy discussions revolved around the valuation-based fees. Valuation fees have been adjusted from the three fifty per square foot to the five hundred and nine per square foot. This is solely a multiplier for fee calculation. It's not the cost of construction. So on the first policy, the council had recommended extract the ADUs and JADUs from the valuation calculation for building permits. Suggestion was for remove from the valuation calculation entirely and/or at lower percentages. In the staff report, staff provided the valuation-based fee model for JADUs. Maximum number of square feet was five hundred. And we provided calculations based off of the new five hundred and nine per square foot. We provided at a cost of sixty percent of that fee, at fifty percent and forty percent. So from the high of five oh nine fee, the standard fee of square footage, it was, total fees were three, three thousand three hundred. So from the high of 509 fee, the standard fee of square footage, it was, total fees were 3,300 and all the way to 2,346 for the 60% at JADU. 2,091 for a, at 50% and at 40%, the cost was 1,800. For the ADUs, staff provided a model of a square foot base fee model for the ADUs, same, similar. The number of square foot maximum for ADUs 1,200, so in the staff report, that was what was used as the square footage for a ADU, and again, the valuations we provided at the cost of 509 per square foot. And then we did, we showed at 60%, 50%, or 40%. In the staff report, assumes that if the town meets its RENA numbers of 35 new ADUs per year, the annual permit loss at 509 would be approximately $210,000. Staff provided that in the staff report, there could be suggestions for the council of only extracting these ADUs and JADUs based off of full cost or at 60, 50, and 40%. Staff is seeking specific council direction on this item number one for ADUs and JADUs.
We can go through each one.
Or I can go.
Can I ask one quick question to clarify? You didn't give us the overall number, so with the changes we're proposing are a change of about 40 point some percent higher, and if we look at all the fees, is that correct?
On the, the square footage, it was about 46% increase.
46% increase.
To 509. Again, the fees for the building specific have not increased since 2013 until we did, when we did our last study. So we just finished the study.
What is the deficit at we're at right now? We're running at a burn rate of what's our deficit overall?
At the current, the building, it's approximately about 800,000 at our new, based off of what we're charging now and what the new costs are.
But, if I could interject.
Go ahead.
But, Robert, that's just for building. It's
Correct, but the total
Is about 800,000.
Yeah.
But the total is about a million eight overall.
Yeah, overall, a million eight deficit right now because of our fees being too low.
But if we're, if we're looking at the ADU calculation right now, which he's taking segmented, let me just ask a question. If we do the valuation model of 509 being the cost, the actual cost, right? But we want to, the valuation cost, okay. But if we want to incentivize our residents somehow, which I think is more of a policy decision, if we want to incentivize, we want to give them a break somehow. But we don't want to break our bank either. There are other areas where we're gonna try to incentivize our residents to do environmentally positive things in their building. But if you look at the charts, we have red numbers all the way down, and it's, it's really no way to run a business, no way to run a town. So we have to make those adjustments. But I just wanted to add that question in there at how much, I guess what the question we're asking here is how much of a subsidy for the ADU and the JADU valuation fee, fee structure do we want to do? And Stacy has a question. Mayor?
Sorry, go ahead.
Stacy has a question.
I have two things. The first one is I think we should be careful with our language choices here and calling it a deficit because it's not a deficit. What, because our, we have had a surplus in our budget, but what we are doing and have done for 10 years is we've been using our town dollars to subsidize the cost of development for Atherton, and so that money could be spent elsewhere. And so I think we need to be really clear about how we're looking at these fees. I think one of my questions I had asked George specifically for ADUs, one of the things that I really liked that Rick and Bill came up with in our ADU study session was creating an incentive program to get ADUs that are less than 800 square feet to adhere to our design standards through fees, because we cannot, they are exempt of our design standards. And one of my questions to George and to Andreas was whether or not it's legal for us to create an incentive structure through fees and reducing fees to get people to incentivize design standard adherence for sub 800 square foot ADUs.
For instance, for instance, setbacks.
Setbacks.
If they go to our, you know, regular setback instead of encroaching
Right.
The smaller, then could they have less fees?
Yeah. So I
Before, before we go too much further, just for clarity, we're stopping at each one for
Yes.
Take all the comment, and then discuss each one.
Are we taking public comment on each one?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
We should.
Oh, we have a choice. We can take public comment on all, we could do all of it and take public comment on all of it.
Correct, but then you wouldn't be able to discuss in between. You'd have to go through the full staff report. So that's pleasure of the, of the council. But Andreas has an answer to Councilmember.
Okay.
So as far as charging fees for, can you guys hear me okay?
Don't forget, I have a question.
Can you guys hear me or no? You can't hear me?
Here they are. You think it's gonna be a long meeting?
I do.
Cheers, girl.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, thank you.
Andreas. Hello?
Can you hear me?
He's talking, but no one
Can't hear me?
That's in a sign language.
It was working earlier because we heard something.
I don't know what happened.
Okay.
Maybe he could text it to, you know, his response, text it to you.
Yeah, if it's not too long, maybe you can text it and Anthony can read it.
Said waiving them entirely is totally fine, but his point was if we're going to waive them for larger units and charge them for smaller units and require them to sign off ahead of time to particular conditions, that's gonna be a hard thing to sell to HCD.
Wouldn't it just be, could we have it be universal? Anyone who adheres to design standards has this fee waived, but we already know that everyone over 800 has to follow the design standards because that's the rule.
You guys hear me now?
A consistent rule.
You guys still not hear me?
Matter of selling whatever it is to HCD.
Yeah, what you don't want him to do is small one and then expand it.
Yeah, that's him.
We, we don't want to add a condition precedent to them building an ADU. But, I mean, I take your point, and Andreas can probably chime in on that at some point. We still can't hear you, Andreas. He's gonna rejoin.
Okay.
Yeah, he left and he came back, so.
Can you guys hear me at this point?
Go on, Bill. We'll circle back to you if you
Yeah, I need the lawyer for this.
Go ahead, Bill, rather than
So on these fees, Robert, you know, one of the things I'm particularly sensitive to is you know, if you go to the major table that's further back, you know, the colored one, it shows what the staff cost is and then what the other fees are. And so waiving the other fees is okay. Staff cost means we're giving taxpayer dollars away and essentially, and so with the numbers that you're showing here in the staff report, how are they related to whole quantity-wise to the staff cost that's going in there? I saw that George put in a note in the memo that he sent out earlier that said, if we do everything we talked about, essentially, we're giving away half a million dollars.
The total, that was the 210,000 that's listed in the staff report, that is full cost. It doesn't break it out by staff or mailing costs.
Yeah, but he's got all that.
No, but I'm telling you what the one in the staff report is, is the full cost. That's what that number represents.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, at the 509 square feet.
Okay.
Okay, so I think Stacy said it right. It's not, we're giving it away. We're not giving anything away, but it, there is a subsidization, subsidization where we are not charging the developers the full cost. And based on the analysis, the study analysis that we've just received, that aggregate subsidization at present is approximately 1.8 million dollars a year. And we can, and, and if we eliminate it and we go up to the estimated valuation cost of 509, we'll eliminate the subsidizing developers and, and that obviously means residents for different costs. I think there are some costs that are appropriate to subsidize. And I think on this issue, the ADU issue, that there's two things, two ways to look at it that are really important. One is from our residents' perspective, I think we want to encourage JDUs and JADUs. So I'm extremely comfortable to set those costs at zero and fully subsidize them. That aggregate, if, if we approved everything that was in the staff report as subsidies, that came out to approximately 600,000. That's one-third of what we're currently subsidizing. So we're dramatically reducing the amount of subsidy that we're, we'd be providing going forward. And I think on the ADUs, those residents that want to build an ADU, we want to encourage them to build an ADU because it's a much better way for us to achieve our RENA numbers than to force apartment buildings onto parcels throughout our town. That, that's number one. That's from the, from the resident perspective. From the, the other really important perspective, I think, is the HCD perspective. Then we need to be cognizant of what HCD will like and won't like, and we're gonna come up to some other things in the meeting tonight that address some of those, like you know, a, a rate agreement that, that a homeowner could agree to and whatever, but we'll come to that later tonight. But I think that, I think it's important for us, I, I fully support sending this one to zero.
We're still on questions.
Now, I think that what Stacy brought up in terms of the, the attempt to do everything we can to encourage our residents and developers to adhere to the building standards that we've got in the code is the right thing. I mean, I'd love to say if you build an ADU and comply with our code, your fee will be zero. If you build an ADU and you choose to not comply with our code, then the fee will be something else. I, I'd still rather it not be 100%, maybe it's 25% or there's some number. I, I reckon, and I, and I understood what Andreas kind of said through the email he sent to George is that perspective that if you give a benefit to somebody who complies with your code may act adversely against that homeowner that wants to put in an 800 square foot ADU because they don't have to comply with the code right now. They can do anything they want.
Yeah, so that's gotta be sold to HCD.
And, and that's an HCD issue, and I, I mean, my preference would be to do what we think is right. And if HCD objects to it, then we'll deal with that. But that would be my inclination.
Do we have any more clarifying questions? Because we were on questions. Anybody have any more questions? I actually have a very simple question. In the number here, the 210,700, whatever it is, that's under which category? Because above it, you're showing all these different categories?
That's the 100% full cost, 100% cost recovery.
Okay, so we don't, so each of these, you can then divide by whatever the percentage is to get how much the loss would be on each of those? Okay. Any other questions on, or clarifying questions? Do we have, so should I go to the public?
Right, so if you're gonna do each one, then you have to do public comments on each particular
I think we should do because it's dense enough. So do we have any public comments on this particular item? Please step up.
I have a lot of but within three minutes, two of you asked me to take a look at this schedule.
Okay.
But I do not want to go item by item up here. And I make a general comment because I have no plans to spend three minutes item by item. Thank you. So two of you did suggest I look at this, and I did today. I spent about four hours on it, and candidly, I know quite a bit about the master fee schedule because I spent a lot of work on it 12 or so years ago. When we did the last one, it was the off-hall issue. Well, after I spent four hours, I had to take a valium. Reading what was in this. The good news, as a developer here, I have no problem whatsoever on the 509 dollar per square foot charge. In fact, it's long overdue and could probably be higher. I have no problem with the consideration on the ADU and the JADU, so where do I have a problem? I have a real problem with the categories where you're increasing some of them by 300 and 400%. And one of the fundamental problems is the support services cost. Now, I spent 14 years in finance, corporate finance, eight of which were spent as controller of, of a subsidiary of Verizon. I spent eight years as the general manager of a business, you know, of a public company here in the Valley. And if I had seen support cost that exceeded my direct cost like these two, I would have fired half the admin staff and cut out every consultant. You have a problem with the methodology and the support cost here, and that is what is driving part of this perceived loss. You can't have that. So I think these support costs really need to be studied, and, and I don't know what the methodology was. You ask, you act as though the town's basic work isn't being recouped. And yet, when we did the budget meeting, we have a lot of excess revenue. If we're not recouping 2 million dollars, where are we getting all this excess revenue? I'm sorry, I'm gonna go just a little bit longer. You didn't choose to share this with the Builders Roundtable. It was posted on some obscure newsletter. Didn't even know about the study session. It should go to the Builders Roundtable because those are the people that actually know what the work is involved in these and have an idea of the time that's involved. Some of these have really excessive time. You're charging twice for some of the services that are in here because part of it is already in the civil engineering review that's part of the building permit, but you're charging again. Guys, how can you charge your neighbors 4,500 dollars to go, not 4,500, almost 4,000 to go before the planning commission for a TPZ review on one tree?
I agree with that.
I went for one foot variance. I was told I was gonna be charged 3,500. It was over my ADU. I was gonna get rid of the ADU. Well, now you're charging almost 4,000. I've had two people come to me to say, my God, 3,500 dollars to go to the planning commission? There is no possible justification for that. And then you want 1,000 dollars to connect a driveway to the street. Let's take an example.
I agree with that one, too.
There's no hearing. I own the easement. You want to charge me 1,000 dollars to put pavers over the easement so I can connect my new driveway to the street? So this fee schedule has got to have some realistic input from those that know the work that the city actually does. And we need to understand the support cost formula. So I urge you to defer this from the next city council meeting to give people that actually have some knowledge a chance to actually provide some input. And I'll be happy to do so next week, but I could not do it in four hours today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a question.
Yeah, Bill?
And why wasn't this, that was one of my questions, did the Builders Roundtable look at this? Why wasn't, why didn't they get a chance to at least comment on it before it's coming to the council?
It was provided as a notice to the Builders Roundtable that it was coming up.
As a notice that it's coming up, but they didn't have the data.
It wasn't, well, it had the data in November, but it wasn't set for a specific meeting for them to sit down and discuss it.
When is the next meeting?
Yeah, when's the next meeting?
Tuesdays are first Mondays. I do as well, yeah. It was, it was mentioned, it was mentioned at the meeting. But I mean, but they're
Well, is it possible that, this is a question. Is it possible then that you can take our comments quickly, but that you go to the Builders Roundtable and bring this back in a subsequent meeting? I don't want to delay the meeting, but I, I do think that, and I thought even in my notes, I felt that it was important that they at least provide a comment.
Right, and I, we can, we can certainly do that if the council wants to continue the item. We just couldn't adopt it this evening, even with your comments, because you have to come back if they provide additional comments and changes. So it would be a continuance, just point one. Point two is, this was an in-depth study, the Capital Accounting Partners, that had to talk to each staff member, processed each application, what they actually do, attributed the staff time and hours. And we aren't talking about a 1,000, 1,500 square foot facility. We're talking about a 10,000 square foot facility now in terms of the overhead costs. So those are factored into some of the backend support costs in addition to the staff time and resources.
I'll just finish my one comment. I do think it's important that we at least get their input and evaluate their input. I know that we did spend a lot of money with a contractor to provide us their cut on this. But I would have liked to have heard from the builders before I made a final decision.
Just a question for George. In our one-on-one, you'd mentioned that some of the fees and the processes were being reviewed and potentially changed to be at another meeting. Can you?
Yeah, that's on some of the planning side. I know that end group has been going through the application processes and calling out what each individual step is. And for some of them, they're actually going to be streamlining that process. The fee would be adjusted accordingly based on that.
So, okay.
That's on the planning side, not the building side.
Right, and that's happening right now. So hopefully, that'll come in part of the council at some point.
Correct, and an additional note is fees such as condition and use permits, variances, heritage tree removals, and some of these, these other fees. It's a policy question for the council whether you want to encourage those sorts of
Activities.
Activities in the community, removing heritage trees, getting variances, things like that, which are exceptions to current law.
Good point.
The mayor, so I was going to circle back to our December sixth meeting where there was a study session and we received the report from this consultant, the user study cost allocation, Dan Eds of Capital Accounting did this. And it was like, you know, stunning. It was like, oh, my gosh, you know, there was all these red numbers that, you know, we were kind of like overspending and not recovering anything. And we hadn't done anything for at least ten years of updating or, you know, focusing on the actual costs of providing these services. And in light of the, so one of my understandings was one of the reasons the costs in the planning department had gone up so much was, number one, the bigger building, more staff, and the housing element that has been, you know, taking up so much more time of our planners and has required more planning staff to deal with. It's not like business as usual, or it had been for the last, you know, fifteen, twenty years that I've been involved of a planner reviewing a set of plans and things. I, my opening comments were that I think there's policy decisions that the council should make about incentivizing our residents to do things that are environmentally impactful and to build ADUs and JADUs to meet our housing element requirements. And those we should really focus on and reduce or eliminate building fees. I mean, one of the first fees that we ever eliminated was installation of solar panels. And that had to have been fifteen, twelve years ago, you know, ten or twelve years ago, I remember that we did that. Or, you know, things like that, yeah, so.
Just for clarification, I'm sorry to jump in there, but the cost of the housing element is a town cost. It's not factored into any of these fees. Part of the reason that planning costs have increased is we had, our prior planning group did not have any revenue adjustments to them over a period of time that were captured in our fees.
Right.
A new planning group on board and had to do a whole lot of catch-up. And so their costs were a little higher.
That's true.
But number two, the processes for processing applications have become far more complicated in the last five to ten years than it ever has been.
I can agree with that. You can agree with that, can't you, Carol? The process of processing applications, the government process, has become more complicated over the last few years.
Every time I turned around, I had nine new pages of comments that had been added to the plans. Finally, I got so disgusted, the way the building department said, I'm not adding one more comment. I'm not adding a comment about having the green coat of carpet. That was one of the comments. The person who was charging the building department that day, Mike Green, he was out saying, Carol, please give me one day to look at this. My five pages became one paragraph by the next day that I had to add. It was totally unnecessary for Inner West to spend two weeks telling me obscure, ridiculous comments that had to be added over and over. So we have made the building permits an unreasonable, burdensome process with review after review. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Nice to hear.
Good question.
You're very welcome, Carol. I'm so glad. That's my goal. That's really my goal.
Yeah.
So is it being streamlined right now, all this process? That's what I think Stacy was saying. Some parts of it are being streamlined. So that's in process, right? Yeah, go ahead.
Stacy has a go.
Yeah. Okay, so I think Carol's comments, as someone who experiences these fees more than we do, are good. And I think there's two tracks that we should be looking at here. One is tonight, we've been asked, how are we approaching fees in general as a holistic policy? And then separately, I think Carol's feedback is real, and it seems like the staff is working on it of reviewing our process to see if there's ways that we could streamline it. And that, it sounds like, is coming later in front of the council for us, too. So I think, before we get in the weeds too much, because we have a very long agenda on these kinds of things, we should focus on.
Are you proposing that we talk just about policy decisions of which of the items we want to subsidize more? And not talk about the absolute amounts and wait till we get absolute amounts later? Is that what you're proposing?
It sounds like the amounts are going to change, potentially.
So you're saying, let's just look at the decision.
Right, or more, I think the numbers don't matter. I think the goal is, what's our, what are we trying to policy-wise subsidize?
We just had a little sidebar.
Oh, okay. You have your hand up.
Yeah, I do. Go for it.
Oh, thank you very much. I recognize we have a brand-new building, we have a brand-new planning staff, and their costs are a little bit higher. So I, you know, I fully agree that some of these rates need to go up. I agree, and we've said all along that our planning process needs to be streamlined. And I know that George has looked at it and is, you know, continuing to look at it. You know, again, I'd like to see, to the maximum extent possible, even though our budget is set and we have the money in here for it, and these just bring in the money to cover the costs of things. You know, I think some of our fees need to be changed and brought into line. And I've got a list of those, but I won't bore you until we get to that part, if we get to that part. But I do think some of the numbers that we came up with, given it was a ten-year period of time, a new building, new this and that, and probably processes that got convoluted because there was a handover between different organizations and stuff like that. I think maybe some of the fees are a tad bit high. I do believe we should use the fees in certain areas to encourage, like we've talked before, encourage development where we, and following processes that we said we want to have. We need to make sure that we do that. And that's about it for this, unless you want me to go through my, I got twelve, I got twelve items in the color chart.
Okay, we're just doing ADUs right now.
Okay, great. Well, I gave you the overview on my position on the ADUs.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
But I think it's important for the council to focus on those policy issues, plus the additional ones I brought up in that pre-agenda email, which I think council members will know that's included.
So would it be useful for you to start, we're right now, we're at item number one, which is ADU? So is it useful for us to discuss our policy issues around ADUs? And you're proposing different tiers here, and they have associated numbers. So are you looking?
I'm not proposing any of those. Those are just.
Right, but are, do you want feedback on which tier we're interested in? Is that what we're looking for here?
Census direction on what you would like to charge for ADUs and JADUs.
And we're now on comments. We're not on questions. So does anybody have any comments about specifically ADU and JDUs? Well, go.
I propose that we set the fee at zero for any ADU, for any JADU and any ADU that complies with our building codes. And staff can change that language. And that we set the fees at twenty-five percent for ADUs that don't comply with the building codes. And I'm fine for a higher number if somebody wants to propose a higher number.
They gave thirty before, so did you just throw?
I just threw the numbers. Nobody gave thirty before.
That was in something I read.
Yeah, it was in those report last time.
Yeah.
For ADUs, I'm okay with thirty if we've used thirty somewhere else.
Okay, I would go higher. I'm just going to speak out of turn. For the people who aren't following the design standards, I mean, that's really important to our residents. And so having an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU on the front line of a property is, that's allowed. And that's something we really don't want. And so I, I also want to subsidize housing, but I think trying to protect the town, that's something that has been a universal thing that we're hearing, that people are really worried about that, their privacy, et cetera. So I would do a higher number of, or a lower subsidy, a higher percentage.
I totally agree with that. Andreas didn't really give the full answer to that question of whether we're allowed to do that, so.
He doesn't know. It's really up to HCD. And the suggestion is that HCD is not going to support a differentiation that creates this incentive to build a bigger ADU and disincentivizes ones that are allowed by state law.
This doesn't, this doesn't necessarily support, is an incentive to build a bigger ADU. It's an incentive to comply with the rules. If you want an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU or a six-hundred-square-foot ADU, you can do it. If you set it back ten feet, you get a lower fee.
And I think that's the policy direction, but we just don't know whether that's going to fly with HCD. And then my general comment is, if you're going to reduce the fee, I would encourage, instead of twenty-five percent, thirty percent, something like that, to just say direct cost.
Exactly.
That eliminates the overhead piece of the building and all that stuff. And it's just the real staff time that's involved, and that's one column of that table.
Yep.
Yeah, and I fully support.
I do, too.
Where are the ADUs on that table? By the way, this table is impossible to read. Because it's just too complex.
That's from that consultant, Mr. Eds.
I'm just saying, whoever it's from, I can't, I can't read.
You're so smart, though.
But where, I don't know where the ADUs are and to read.
You got to look at the.
Single-line items.
Just look at the individual pieces.
I'm just looking at the staff report.
That's a fee. One is the building permit, which is a valuation-based fee. And the other is a planning fee, which does have a direct staff cost and that sort of thing connected to it. And that's in the table. It's ADU under planning, not building. But the valuation-based fee, the one that we're talking about now, doesn't have a direct staff cost.
We can be talking about, your table in the, in the staff report includes both building and planning.
Yes.
So what I propose, the zero, if they comply with our code provisions, it applies both to building and planning. And I don't know where, I don't know where the ADU stuff is in this attachment. I can't find it.
So for the valuation component for ADUs, it's on the first page of the building fee, which is page one of four.
Page one-twenty-five in the pack.
Yeah.
Page one-twenty-five?
In the pack.
No, it's not one-twenty-five.
Well, if you add the whole pack together, it's page one-twenty-five.
Top of the numbers, so you can't see them.
It's page one of four in the attachment, but it's one-twenty-five in the whole pack. I work off a pack, not.
One of four of the attachment.
Would it be helpful to put it up on the screen, George?
No, because you can't read it.
Can we put it on the screen? Would that help? So we're all seeing the same thing.
It has Class D public right-of-way in the middle of the page?
No, it's with permitted value of construction, new habitable construction.
Yeah, permitted value of construction. It's got the five dollars, it's five-oh-nine, five-oh-nine, three-fifty, surcharge one-fifty-nine.
Oh, I see. There's pages I wasn't looking.
Yeah.
Page one-twenty-five of the pack.
If the appendix want page one, building fees.
So that's the valuation component that's in the staff report.
We're all looking at different formats.
It's because I do it all as my. Doing it locally, you took the whole pack and you uploaded it.
Yeah.
Page one-twenty-five.
Yeah. Mine, I'm doing it with the second.
So it sounds, just to bring us all back, it sound like Rick had a suggestion. And I'd love to hear people's opinion on his suggestion.
I gave mine.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with Stacy. I think the number, though, shouldn't be thirty percent. I think thirty percent is too long. The total external costs are five-hundred-and-nine, and going with thirty percent, I don't think is.
But I think that the city manager said direct cost instead of a percentage. And that's what I like best.
And that's for anything other than the valuation-based fee. This is the valuation-based fee, so that we have to pick up a different.
It sounds like we're all agreeing on the five-oh-nine number. That's, that we're all agreeing on that. Is it, so why don't we parse them out so that we can get consensus on the various pieces? So.
Well, it sounds like everyone agrees with zero for those that comply with the code.
Yes.
Yeah, we're able to do that, yes.
Zero for both building and planning.
Is that right? Does everyone feel that way?
ADU and ADUs.
Well, I'd like to have the staff for the inspection cost included. I do think that that's a real cost to us, and I think that that should be pulled out. But if I'm, if I'm in the minority, like four to one, then I'll concede.
If we're going to subsidize anything, I'd want to subsidize this, as well as the green thing. So those are the things that.
Well, you can subsidize the planning portion and the back and forth.
It upsides both of them.
George, there's no direct cost in the direct unit costs for all the housing stuff. There's nothing in there for the valuation, right? So for this one, we can say percentage. So then we can end it here. So, okay, great.
So what percentage are you going with?
It sounds like you have direction. Is there anything further you need?
Haven't figured out.
Wait, do we all agree? I think we do, though.
No, I don't think we did.
I don't agree with thirty percent.
I think we wanted to.
It's too low. I'd say go forty-five or fifty.
All right, you guys, everyone's, we have to talk one at a time.
Set the fee to zero for any JADU or ADU, JAD is interior, so we don't worry about that. For any, set that fee for JADU's to zero. And set the fee at, for any ADU to zero, so long as it complies primarily with our ten-foot setback requirement. That's the only thing you're really concerned about.
Our design standard, what?
Our design standards.
We don't have design standards for this yet.
The same, it's regular.
So so long as it complies with the setback requirement.
Setbacks.
If it doesn't, then the fee for that ADU would be thirty percent, twenty-five percent?
Fifty percent.
Or, or the, just the direct costs. I don't know.
There is a direct cost for this one.
I say fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
Yeah. Thirty percent's too low.
I would go higher. I just like, if people are put, like, I'm just, I want to subsidize housing, but I'm just, if they're not adhering to our setbacks and, I mean, maybe by a foot.
Fifty percent, you run into a problem with HCD.
Yeah.
Just throw a number out, sixty percent, okay.
Fifty percent, I want to subsidize building ADUs. I'm just, the universal feedback we're getting from the town is concern about setbacks. And so I don't, I'm not sure about subsidizing.
Non-setbacks.
Make it a hundred and fifty percent.
Yeah, then you pay actu, no, we can't, sorry, HCD, we didn't say that. No, I'm just, I want, I think fifty, I love fifty.
All right, good.
Fifty percent, fifty is okay.
Okay, moving on.
Wait, do we all agree on that, that's the direction?
We got three.
Fifty percent?
For ones that don't comply.
Ones that don't meet setbacks.
If HCD will allow.
With HCD, but that's.
Right, if they'll allow, and with, if Andreas blesses that.
I think it's good we're limiting the issue to just setbacks, rather than a litany of things.
Perhaps it would be helpful if I moved through them with the council, with the mayor's permission.
Yes, please.
So the next one is extracting the green permit fees from the mechanical plumbing and electrical permits and setting those. We've got a list within the staff report of what staffs identified as potential green building components. Those include, you know, greening up your water heater, your furnace, your.
Well, what you said was battery backup systems, installation of heat pumps, electric water heaters, removal of gas lines, and appliances such as cooktops, washers, and dryers.
Yes.
And I think you had suggested something else.
There was, you and I were talking about a solar connection, a panel upgrade connected to a, any panel upgrades connected to any of these items that are required.
An electrical panel.
Electrical panel, yeah, that's big.
But you weren't sure that that was necessary.
I wasn't, because the bulk of those costs are actually PG&E. I I wasn't because the bulk of those costs are actually PG&E related and your actual physical cost to actually upgrade your panel. But the town's permit for that is.
There's an inspection when you do panel changes.
All right, but I think we already voted on that and said we should reduce them to zero.
I don't think it was a vote, but.
Well, I saw, we gave input on.
I'm supportive of this.
Okay.
I'm as well. Are we all, we're all supportive of that one?
Okay, let's move on. Yay.
Solar's already at zero.
It's already there. Planning side permits of ADUs and JADUs to zero. Now, the recommendation here from from staff is before setting it to zero, consider the direct cost, setting it to the direct cost, cuz that is.
So what's the total cost of the, of these businesses?
Wait, didn't we already deal with that when we talked about ADUs and JAD?
No, that was the building component.
Okay, this is the planning.
Planning component where we can also look at the.
And we do the same thing we did with the building?
Which is seven hundred and seventy-eight.
For JADUs.
U and two thousand five hundred and sixteen for ADUs. This is what we're talking about.
This one's different cuz it's not the planning fee.
So policy, policy consideration is set the planning permit fee for JADUs and ADUs to zero. And in the, in the staff report, it's, it's JADU seven seventy-eight, ADUs to two thousand five sixteen.
And this creates an eighty-eight sixty subsidy that we're making up for.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
But that is to incentivize
Yeah.
the construction.
I don't think a lot of people in Atherton need a bunch of saving ten thousand dollars or one thousand dollars on building an ADU. If you want my personal opinion, I think it's absolutely crazy.
I think it's, uh, I think for HCD, it's it's perception that we're trying to do everything in our power to incentivize, encourage.
Okay.
The the direct, the direct cost of a JADU is five hundred and thirty-two and the direct cost of a ADU is seventeen twenty-two. So instead of zero, you could set them to that and you could use that number and set the same sort of philosophy that you did for the ones that comply with the setback requirements. You can set it to the reduced fee, uh, ones that don't.
Get the.
Well, you wanna recommend thirty and fifty then?
No.
The direct cost.
The direct cost.
For those that don't comply with their setbacks.
That's a good idea, yeah.
So it it's zero if you comply with the setbacks.
And direct cost.
Direct cost if you don't. Do we all like that idea?
Yeah.
Are you guys good on that one?
I do, so.
The direct cost, which is lower than what yet this is.
For those that don't comply with the setback.
So we're all agreeing on that? So that, so George, you got your direction on that one. So let's, let's move on to the next one.
Landscape screening permit set to thirty percent of cost recovery. Again, the recommendation is instead of thirty percent, use direct cost.
Right, I agree.
That's the policy question.
And what what is the difference between, I I can't figure out where these things are in the table.
Yeah, and I I have a question here. Is this, is this landscape permit fees for everything? Or is this just for landscape for ADUs?
Certain, everything's screened.
With a new permit that comes through the town for a structure, you're required to get a landscape screening.
So for any house, for any house, so right, so we're not saying, so this doesn't incentivize ADUs in any way at all. This is just giving everyone a break on on screening, which of course we want, but.
Did you over this with George or not?
Yeah, I know. That's a, that's a good question, cuz remember the problem.
I discount when I built my house and I had to do all my landscape screening.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we wanna incentivize, but it's a cost.
Now your cost is going up dramatically because all the costs are going up dramatically. And you got, so you got subsidized based on whatever the real costs to the town were at the time versus what they charged you. Yeah, and so did I.
So you're lucky. Let's move.
But I think we, I think, I don't know, I like it because I wanna motivate people to apply for permits to do landscape screening and I don't want them to be horrified when they get a bill that's fifteen thousand dollars for landscape screening.
This, this landscape screening is three hundred and eighty-nine dollars is what it currently is. The the new cost would be five hundred and eighteen.
I mean, that's.
I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a big burden.
I think, yeah, and it's not incentivizing an action that we are trying to promote. So remember, we're trying to incentivize and and recoup as much as we can from things that are not in our line of what we wanna promote. So although I like landscaping, but.
All right, let's move on.
Uh, set the staff level heritage tree removal permits cost to direct costs only.
Agree with that.
Why do we wanna incentivize heritage tree removals? I have a question about that.
I have, let's see here.
We don't.
So.
But I like the number that you had in the, in the report, last, last report. Let me see what page that's on, one twenty-one.
So it's seven hundred and sixteen, seven hundred and sixteen for the first tree and two hundred and forty, forty-eight for each additional tree is what we're talking about.
Heritage tree removal per- um, permit.
Permit cost.
Six thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Where are you? We're reading it off of this.
I think the direct cost was forty-six, forty-two, wasn't it?
Guys, please clarify.
Forty-six, forty-two.
The staff level, uh, staff level heritage tree removal, which is in the planning side, page two of four, staff level.
They didn't want it.
For the first tree is six hundred and fifty-four total cost. It's currently two hundred, it's currently two hundred and sixty-one, currently two hundred and sixty-one.
I have a, I have a question about her. I'm, I'm not as um well versed on the heritage tree. Is this, if someone if like someone has a sick tree that's dying, is that, do we waive the fee or is, I know we're.
For dead, dying or dangerous trees already.
Okay, so this is people are choosing to take down heritage trees.
This is just removing heritage.
So we don't, I wouldn't wanna incentivize, I wouldn't subsidize that.
No, we shouldn't incentivize that.
We're gonna have to do it.
It'd be.
Y'all agree on that one, George. So we have some direction there. Is that?
The fence permit fees to thirty percent of cost recovery and again, staff's recommending at least do direct cost.
No, no, we're not saying thirty percent. We're saying we don't wanna incentivize it at all is what I I've heard.
Fence.
We're on fence now. We're trying to move fast here cuz we have a lot to go. So we're on fence now.
Well, that's a surprise.
I think we wanna incentivize people to get a permit, put in fence. And I think that if it's extremely expensive, they're just gonna put in a fence. They're not gonna get a permit.
But I don't.
And they don't have to get a permit. They, most, uh, I mean, I don't know the numbers, but.
Nine hundred dollars.
I thought the, I thought the fee for fences was a tad bit high as proposed.
Nine hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was high to put it in the fence.
The direct cost of that is six seventy-five, so that's.
Six seventy. So you're, you're listing thirty percent here, right? The one that you listed was thirty percent. So what is the direct cost?
That came from a council member. So the thirty, the direct cost is six hundred and seventy-five.
Okay.
Thirty percent would be thirty percent of nine hundred and eighty-six.
I don't, I don't think.
Uh, let's go with the direct cost.
Make money on our permits.
We're not allowed to make money.
We're not making money. This is staff time.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right.
So direct costs on that?
Oh, you know, what they say, good fences make good neighbors.
Right.
I'm on direct cost. Does anyone have an opinion that they'd like to express? We seem to be.
The direct cost.
Probably will hate sitting next to me during.
I do what the direct cost is.
The direct cost was six hundred versus the nine hundred and something.
These should be.
Versus at thirty, it was. Two hundred and sixty-nine.
Cost is better than the full cost.
I think the direct cost would be the way to go.
Direct. Do you guys, how do you guys feel about the direct cost for the fence?
I feel great about direct costs. To charge direct cost. All along, I've been saying that.
Okay, Stacy, how's your opinion on fences?
So is that the nine eighty-six then?
No, it's less than that. It's six hundred something.
I love it, yeah.
All right, we're good. We're good.
Maintain long registration fees at one hundred dollars.
I, I'm in favor of keeping those and in favor of raising.
Raising.
Raising the second, the fourth or whatever.
Which one are we on? Alarm?
Now on alarm.
I do not agree with changing that.
False alarm fees?
False alarm fees? You don't wanna raise them?
No, we passed an ordinance and and we just did it a year or two ago. And that's, you know, I don't know how many of these false alarms we really get. I think that it's really cut down dramatically. And I don't think it's as big as answers.
Answer that rather than speculate.
Can have him, he can answer as soon as I'm done, but I'd like to keep it exactly the same as it is.
Okay. Chief, now. You're talking about.
We want people.
We needed to get up a little bit.
I'll get three minutes.
Thank you.
The table says about forty.
I don't have the exact number, but I would not say they have declined dramatically. It's consistently a problem.
The table says about forty a year, fourth one.
How much?
Fourth one?
Forty of them a year.
Here, but these are fourth, fifth and sixth false alarms we're talking about. We're not talking about the one or two. We're like talking if the person's a repeat offender here.
I I'll give the argument for doubling the fees from what we agreed to a year ago. The argument is if you have a, there, there's a couple of different reasons why you could have a false alarm. I personally have had two false alarms. One, because I didn't properly latch the window right. And when I was away, the alarm went off. Okay, that, that's my error. Uh, the second one was because a mouse ate a connector and the sensor didn't work. So at that point, I had a choice. I can hire the alarm company to come in and disconnect it so that that window is no longer alarm connected, but then I don't have a false alarm. Or I can say, wow, it cost me too much to have this guy come in. Just let the false alarm go. And let the false alarm go.
All right, well, we're talking about.
I think we wanna motivate people to have the guy come in to fix it.
Right.
So if they've done, if they've had four false alarms, I don't have a problem.
We're talking fourth here. It's already four. Yes, Bill?
Yeah, I, how many people actually registered? Because I think a lot of people haven't registered from what I understand.
Increase that through our billing process for the permits. That has increased. That's part of the intent of the program is that we have more information. So the actual number, I don't. It's around fourteen hundred, I believe.
Yeah, cuz the first time around, many people didn't do it.
Right.
Yeah, and so we wanna incentivize people to get their alarms to the police department and turn them on, okay? And that sometimes creates a false alarm. But if you wanna raise it a hundred dollars for number four, um, I I'll let it go, not.
We could make an arrest if we want.
Throw them in jail. What's the time period for these false alarms? Is it a year? Is it six months?
Yeah.
Seth?
Correct.
Bob McCall.
Man, you'll, you bring it up, the, you get a letter from them? It came up every, every year you get a letter and they say.
Well, you renew it every year.
Renew for a hundred dollars. So let's.
I meant the false alarms, like how many?
Going off these measures in a year.
Three, three ones.
Can we separate these? Let me, let me get control of the group here. Let's separate these. We're first talking about the annual fee. And I would propose that we keep the annual fee as it is. How does everyone feel about that?
A hundred dollars.
Now let's talk about the fourth, fifth and sixth. I would personally propose that we pay the full cost of what it costs our police department. By the fourth time, you should pay for that service visit. That's, uh, what do you guys think of that idea?
I think Rick, Rick raised it up, doubled it from what it was, and I agreed with Rick.
I think doubling the two hundred, three hundred, four hundred to four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred is still within your cost recovery number, so you're not making money on it. Uh, but it's still high enough to be a disincentive, so.
Good. That's all we're looking for. Not exactly right language. It's not that we're not making money on it. We're not recovering the.
Not subsidizing.
Yeah, sorry.
So are we talking about the two hundred, three hundred, four hundred or the seventy-nine, seven, nine, five and eight, five, four? Those are the two sets of numbers that are before us, okay? So one.
Bill proposed changing the two hundred to three hundred.
It starts at three hundred?
Well, I think that's what Bill proposed.
So you would be saying three hundred?
For the fourth.
Yeah, so it's.
Four hundred for the.
Three hundred, four hundred, five hundred then.
Yeah, we just wanna get people's attention. Three hundred dollars is okay.
So three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, but even that, we're subsidizing. Is that correct?
You bet.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
You think it's okay to subsidize? This is one I'd be a hard ass if you're not gonna get your stuff fixed.
Don't say that word here on TV.
But we also like, we want people to have positive feelings about police.
Yeah, but this is fourth, fifth and sixth time we're talking about here.
When they go, they educate them and try, they've, they've changed a lot of things talking to people, okay?
All right.
Let's see how it goes.
Okay.
Do you have a comment?
Well, I will tell you that it, it is one of the biggest issues that we have, and we just be clear, a waste of time that we have. And to put it in perspective, we may have one actual real alarm a year, maybe two. Um, if that puts it into perspective, so we are spending a lot of time on this. And you guys were very supportive years ago when we approached this project, that we had to do something about this. Actually, we still haven't gotten where we need to get. And I think, you know, initially, the proposal was, I think, two or three alarms. I think the more that we go, it's not really helping us reduce the problem.
Can I ask, what is the feedback been when the fees start hitting the repeat offenders? Are they, is this actually changing?
I haven't heard any negative feedback. I'm sure that maybe someone hasn't gotten to my level, but when we do go out, we do educate and the letters go out and there's education. Um, and also too, it gives us the opportunity when we do go out and find there's no permit, they need a permit, here's why. Then they're happy to provide us that information so we can help mitigate.
Four, five, six.
Okay.
You know, it might be kinda nice to have it four hundred, five hundred, six hundred years, four, five, six. I mean, I love it. I can remember that.
Good for that.
All right.
Four, five, six.
So we still are gonna do some amount of subsidizing in that scenario and we're, we're good with that?
Sure, let's move on.
Some additional ones that came up during one-on-one meetings. That was leave the address fee change as is, keeping it two hundred and seventy-five dollars instead of the six hundred and sixty actual cost.
Why, why, why?
Well, actually, I, I changed my position on that and said, set it at the direct cost.
Direct cost, all right. I'd go with direct cost cuz there's, what do we wanna incentivize people to change their address? That's not.
Well, people do change their address because they rearrange, they're out of corner.
Okay, well, then they just pay for it.
I don't, sorry, I, the direct cost is different from the full cost.
So let's be clear. Point too, yeah.
I'd say we do full costs on.
Full cost. I don't know why we.
I don't know. We're not incentivized. That's not something that's for the greater good. The, the whole point here is the greater good. That's someone's choosing to do something.
We don't wanna incentivize landscape screening. We shouldn't have incentivized address changing.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't understand what your, what your argument is on somebody changing their address. How many, how many address changes can you get?
We have to, we have a pause.
Pay for it, as we're saying. It's, it's not something that's for the greater good, so why?
I don't agree. I, I agree, the numbers should be direct cost to eighty-five. That's my vote. And if you wanna vote otherwise, then go ahead.
How does everybody else feel about it?
I.
Full cost.
A full cost.
And I'm full cost.
Okay, go on, move on.
I guess I'll step up. Can you step up? I'm sorry, so we can hear you.
Does that apply when you're adding an ADU address? Because you have to have a different address for an ADU in the main house. I don't know if you consider that to be a change, but I would have no fee for that.
But I don't think, you don't have to have a different address for an.
She do. Yes, she do.
Oh, you do?
So the address usually becomes your. Well, I don't know, cuz your main house is, say, ten Camino Porlos Arbeles and your ADU has to become ten A.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Porlos Arbeles. So I would say just.
That's a good point, and I think we should clarify that.
Wave the ADU. Clear out ADs.
If it's an ADU, I'd say zero.
Wait till we're over.
Cuz we're so, thank you.
Administrative flat fee, initial inspection as is, two hundred and ninety-three instead of seven forty-five.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Leave the tree protection administrative flat fee, initial inspection as is, at two hundred and ninety-three dollars instead of seven hundred and forty-five, which is the actual cost.
Where are you? I'm, this is the.
This, these are the.
Under other fees? Under other fees?
These are the other ones that came up in one-on-ones.
Okay, which one are you on? Tree protection exception?
Leave the tree protection administrative flat fee, initial inspection as is, two hundred ninety-three instead of seven forty-five.
Is that the direct cost?
No, that's that was what your one-on-one was. If you change it to direct cost, then that's your recommendation.
Okay. Yeah.
Apparently, there's other people in the room who have public comments related to the topic. So I don't know if it's related to the most recent address change or in general, but.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, that's out of order, but you know what? Why, since we missed it and we didn't do it, that's my bad, so please step up to the mic.
But we didn't do public comment.
Yes, we started doing, we were supposed to do public comment after each one, but we got on a roll, we didn't stop. So I apologize, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, respected members of the Atherton Town Council, esteemed staff and valued members of the community. My name is Jackson Peterson, and today I'm excited to introduce GovGPT, an AI-driven tool designed to optimize Atherton's governance and communication processes. We are basically creating a chat GPT-like interface for town processes. GovGPT's co-founders have strong connections to the town of Atherton. One co-founder, Mercha Voskersein, has recently donated his house at Two Laurie in Lindenwood neighborhood to the Atherton Police to conduct SWAT training next month and recently had his lot approved as the first SB nine project in the town. Our other co-founder has two kids in the Menlo School. First, we would like to do a free pilot for twelve months for the town of Atherton. We have a number of ideas, the first being to use generative artificial intelligence to analyze license plate data to ensure the security of town residents. Second, we would like to help the town of Atherton get its housing plan across the finish line by analyzing the public comments it receives from residents to automatically suggest approaches that will work for residents in the broader community and without changing the whole nature of the town. We understand and are on the side of residents wanting to maintain Atherton's unique rural character while also helping the town manager comply with state law. Third, GovGPT can provide real-time dashboard to track the pulse of the Atherton community. It offers insights into the issues constituents care about, aiding in responsive and data-driven decision-making. This dashboard is a powerful tool aligning the town's policies with the evolving needs and priorities of its citizens. In conclusion, GovGPT is not a just a technology technological solution, but an opportunity for the town of Atherton to meet the needs of its residents. Thank you for considering the potential of GovGPT for Atherton. I'm eager to continue this conversation to explore how we can implement this technology effectively. Can I schedule a time to meet with the town council to show what we can do? I'd also like the council's thought about what we propose.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we don't comment on public.
Yeah, we can't feedback directly, but we'll follow up. Give your contact information to Anthony and George.
That was not in line.
Yes, I know.
Okay, so where were we?
On the list I have here, it says the the support and service cost is five hundred and seventeen dollars. Okay? And the number you gave was not the same. Seven thirty-two was what was recommended in the yellow column. So we want to cover the direct cost. That's pretty much been what we've been saying. There's not a whole lot of lefts, okay? From the five seventeen, there's one left, it's three ninety-three, and then there's nothing.
Can you tell us what item you're on? What is it?
Right there.
And it's in the building fees.
In the building fee table, okay.
It's the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight box down.
What box down?
What's the heading?
The seventh.
So we're not really changing that. Tree protect. On the right page? Yeah, it's the same, we're not changing it from. We're reducing it. And can you remind me what the tree protection, what is this service?
Yeah, it's in it's in the building fee.
And this is when they come and inspect the trees to make sure they're protected, their heritage?
No, that's planning.
And I know we're doing like an arborist mega review. Is this part of that?
I think it's important because we want people to do it.
Yeah, so the fee is the arborist going out to make sure that tree protection is in place before they do construction.
And is this a thing that we just reduce that was happening quarterly and now we've.
No, so I'll give an example. Somebody is going to demolish a house.
Yeah.
Before they can actually pull their permit, they have a tree protection plan that's reviewed and approved. And the tree, the protection fencing has to be installed. The arborist goes out to make sure that the fencing is there before they start doing their work so that they don't damage the trees.
Okay. Okay, and we definitely want to protect our trees. So you had proposed that we're subsidizing that.
Yeah, I don't want to subsidize it. I cover all the drug costs.
But reduce the fee still.
We can have the fee higher.
Because reducing the.
No, but why do we want to subsidize that?
We don't, we don't.
So then we leave it at full cost.
Okay. All right. Great.
Any more?
Thirty-two dollars more.
Wait, this is applying for a variance that you have to go before the planning commission.
This is what Carol was talking about earlier, correct?
We, no, no, we don't want to subsidize client for a variance. We don't want to encourage that.
I agree, I agree.
Full cost.
No, I think actual.
But we discussed that in the previous ones and decided to leave it at full.
From the other trees things.
Heritage.
My opinion.
Which one you on, the planning commission? Yeah, I I suggest that we set it at twenty-seven oh eight. Direct cost.
Direct cost or full fees?
Yes.
Do you guys have a feeling for that one? Direct costs or full fees on on that item?
I have a feeling for it.
What's the difference? What's the full fee versus the direct cost?
Thirty-nine hundred versus twenty-seven.
I think that's pretty high to go to the planning commission, which is a process we put in place.
I think we agree with um having it at a.
Direct cost?
Direct cost, which is four thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars.
Do we agree on direct costs?
Direct cost, yeah, direct cost for that and the planning commission.
It's okay, direct cost is fine with me.
To build houses or whatever closer to.
Is there a difference when it's an ADU versus the main house?
Right, yeah, see, that's, I know, but that's something that's going to come up a lot.
Yeah, because if it's for an ADU, yeah.
Well, we don't want people doing that, hurting the trees. So we should have a minimum of of the direct cost, if not higher.
Planning commission tree protection zone is right here. So right now, it's zero. Right now, it's zero? No.
So it's current fee doesn't have a number in it here on the chart.
Got it. It depends, yeah.
Yeah, the direct the direct fee is twenty-seven oh eight. If I went back into the December number.
It's like twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Twenty-seven oh eight.
This is the direct cost.
Direct cost or actual people?
Per tree.
It's okay with me.
Is it per tree or per meeting?
Can you request more than one in the same thing?
Yeah, you have a plan.
Yeah.
Here are three trees that are.
So you could do all three trees and.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay.
You still have to get a, you still have to get a removal permit, though.
Now we're on to.
This is true.
Well, I'm on to item number seven.
This is like reduced.
Okay, to do direct costs if you guys do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we leaning to a direct cost up here? Okay, trying to get any answers here, George. Thank God. Yes.
Great, great. In person.
Perfect.
Right, okay.
That sounds great, great solution. Yeah.
I'd like to recommend we continue this meeting till the following month so that the city can clean up the table and take the item to the planet, to the builders' round table and also receive their input.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Why don't we take Alex's stuff?
Is Alex here?
Yeah, he's in the back.
Alex, you want to come up because we're in between now?
Yeah, because uh.
Yes, we want to.
Definitely go fast.
Do it quick.
If you go it fast, you have, you can have cake and champagne. If not, you're out of here.
Or you can take it home to your family.
That's a bit, that's a bit much. Can you cue up the?
The the mayor is going to take a quick break, so I'll be acting in her stead.
Go for it.
Go for it, Alex. Nice to see you.
He brings it up.
Oh, you know, we've been having a lot of technical difficulties. We may not, we just may not be able to see it, so you're going to have to kind of do this.
This is the belated fiscal year twenty twenty-three park and rec committee report.
Thank you.
Originally planned, I think, for July, but I was on vacation and then you guys spent dark in August and then I had a business trip in September and you guys had housing. And finally, we can get together in January to cover six months ago. And uh, as soon as the. Yeah, it can be found in PDF mode. I want to shrink it up a little bit. Okay, um, I guess just scroll down. Because I didn't memorize it, so I'm going to need to remind myself. So last year, what the committee tried to do is just focus on a few things so that we can really get those accomplished. And those three things were circulation plan, getting that done, pickleball, just finding out, okay, how are we going to do a trial and how are we going to plan and execute it? And also landscaping, since Brightview just got brought on board to just review what they've been doing that year and make sure everything looks good and up to what the committee members think is good for the park. So next slide, thank you. Um, and some additional changes we did in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, the staff, the committee and the town was, we re uh, did a lot of rehabilitation with the event garden. So we reviewed the plans and Brightview implemented those plans. Uh, tennis program, uh, public works director negotiated a new contract. We made some recommendations as a committee for how we wanted to update that tennis contract since it was, I think, over ten years old, uh, since since it was originally signed. And also, the two of the courts were resurfaced. And we did a number of capital improvements, the town did, event garden landscape refresh, uh, repaired the playground that was had the supports breaking apart and EV charger additions were. And as we moved on to this year's fiscal year, what we focused on was the was the new request to improve the the playground because the playground had to be rehabilitated. So we started collecting feedback from the community, planning that out, finding out what they wanted for the children around the community. Uh, pickleball, we continued that and hopefully next month we will commence the trial and still on track with that this month.
Okay, great.
And um, so we'll find, get some feedback for that from the community, see what the noise is like, what the participation is like. And we'll have to think about if we do decide to go with something permanent, you know, how are we going to do that with the keys, you know, compared to tennis keys and such? Since pickleball is a little bit different in terms of how people play pickleball. It's more kind of um, uh, people just come on and they don't necessarily make reservations all the time. But we can consider that as we get, if it becomes popular. And lastly, completing the circulation plan, finishing that construction, which I believe is pretty much done or is all done. Almost. Um, just to give you guys an idea, I take a look at cost recovery in terms of how our park's doing versus nationally, how other parks are doing. And before COVID, we were very good. We had two-thirds of cost recovery, which is quite excellent compared to everywhere else in the United States. It might be because we have a lot of venues that we can get rental income from. Uh, but of course, COVID hit and things started to decline quite a bit. And we've recovered a bit from our low of twenty-one percent to about thirty percent now, so it's okay. Uh, it's still better than the median for all the national parks. As you can see, it's that hovers around uh, mid mid to low twenties. Uh, but we're a bit farther from the top quartile as before. So next slide, please, Anthony. Thank you. And there's probably a lot of reasons for this. One, how facilities are being rented has changed a lot since COVID has hit. Uh, there was a bit of a surge when when um, when uh, people started coming back and getting, having get-togethers, but now it's kind of died off. We see a lot fewer corporate and private, fewer corporate and private events, fewer kind of weddings. People have smaller weddings or private weddings. I think also we are in competition with our new facility here and the town center, which you guys did a great job on. So it's new, it's got great indoor and outdoor spaces where we can have a lot of events. So the library always holds things here now, and and of course, the town always holds things here. So it's a great venue, which kind of means less usage of the park, which has good and bad things. And and of course, we have the cafe as well for people to sit at. So um, but other things that we've noticed in the park is that the indoor facilities are getting a little dated. So the outdoor outdoor areas, you know, Brightview is doing a pretty good job, but the indoor areas are looking a little dated and might need improvement if it is the council's direction that we try to seek uh, more kind of rental rental income from there. But there's a lot of possibilities of where we could take the future direction. One is, you know, we can wait and see if if people want to come back and have more rentals of venues anymore. Uh, we can also just say, okay, maybe maybe it's okay, we're happy with the park the way it is. We don't need to necessarily rent it out um, all the time or anytime. Uh, or we could have some targeted improvements in which we can ask our new event coordinator whenever that person comes on. Next slide, please. So some things that I've been thinking about as we go along in the next year or so. Um, one is the possibility of permanent pickleball courts. So something for council and for our committee to think about is where, if if it becomes popular, where would they be? Would we take a current court? Uh, would we add some to an other area open to the court? And then how are we going to do the keys? Because it might be a little bit different from the tennis keys. Uh, one idea that the senior committee brought up was the senior playground idea, which is an interesting idea. Uh, having exercise equipment specifically for seniors, because the park course is really for active folks. And then you've got the children's area, which is for kids, of course, but seniors need kind of a low-impact, um, you know, type of exercise equipment. And that might be something we we can consider because we do have uh, uh, an older generation among our residents. So it might be a good idea to have that in our park. And then also, um, if we think about expanding services for our community, probably a community services director may be something to consider in the future. I know that Redwood City has one and Menlo Park has one. They're a big, they're, they are bigger communities, but if it's something that we want to encourage more community, more activities. Um, I know that for my son, I sign him up for activities in Menlo Park and in Redwood City because they have a lot more activities than 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 here in Atherton. But I know we're we're kind of a smaller community, but maybe we we coordinate with another community or something like that. Uh, I think for Menlo Park, one of the things they do is they have a live, their library director also is the community services director. So they act as a dual function. So perhaps one way to pay for it is using library funds to have someone who can coordinate activities both with the community and with the library. So just an idea. What? And lastly, I wanted to thank the council for your support and helping us get through a lot of these initiatives. I want to thank staff, George, Robert and Sally, who used to be our liaison, but uh, it's continued on and our new liaison will will join us. And of course, council member DeGolia, too. So so thank you very much. Uh, any questions? Okay.
This is great.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to resume the public hearing for item seven now. First reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace Atherton's municipal code, chapter seventeen point five two, accessory dwelling units, and to amend chapter seventeen point three six, public facilities and school districts, PFS, and chapter seventeen point sixty definitions. And I believe we have a report by Brittany.
Yes, thank you, council members. Uh, Brittany Bendix, town planner. Anthony is passing out a hard copy of the presentation.
We're going to need to hear you better.
Is that better?
I think so.
So good evening. Anthony just passed out a hard copy of the presentation that I'll be providing tonight and he'll bring that up shortly on the screen as well.
What were we waiting for?
Going to pull it up on the screen is what I think.
All right.
All right, well, so our recommendation tonight was to uh, conduct a public hearing for the first reading of the ordinance that would repeal and replace the bulk of chapter seventeen point five two, which governs accessory dwelling units, and then amend chapter seventeen point three six, public facilities and school districts, the PFS zoning, and chapter seventeen point six zero definitions, just to acknowledge the requirements as well. Uh, so we'll go to slide three, which shows the breadth of changes that are required by state law. Those are highlighted here in orange or what may be coming through as red text. It doesn't leave much for the town to to use in terms of regulating ADUs to the town's individual local standards. You'll see that basement sign, stand out, privacy screening and landscaping also stand out. Next slide. But the areas where we focused on November 15th, when we last met to introduce this ordinance, really focused on two objectives: incentivizing compliance with the town's own setback standards, and we discussed that a little bit on the last item. And then the second, incentivize ADU development to meet the town's RENA objectives. And we broke that up in three different categories, looking at creating a bonus ADU program, because that was raised in the housing element as a potential housing program. Also, looking at allowing ADUs above detached garages, and then really taking another look at our controls for heritage trees as they relate to ADU development. So I'm gonna go through each one of these very briefly, in terms of what's in your staff report and the changes that came out of the feedback that I received from council back in November. Next slide. So looking at the bonus ADU program, as I previously mentioned, the Housing Element Program 3.812F does suggest the town would pursue an ADU bonus program that would allow up to two detached ADUs on the property. However, when the council adopted this program, that was under the impression that only two ADUs were allowed onsite, or one ADU, detached ADU was allowed onsite. And now, looking at new state legislation, we're realizing that this would actually be a third ADU as the bonus ADU. Additionally, it would only apply to lots two acres or larger, and it would be a voluntary program. The other component of the bonus ADU program that came out of discussions January of last year through May, at the study session that the Council Planning Commission had, was a deed restriction component that would require that bonus ADU to have a specific affordability level for a specific time period. And so what we had put out in November was 15 years at low income. And I know that the city manager did receive some questions on what that kind of program might look at and what the rates were that would be reflected through that program. And so what I wanted to do was put up a table that shows pretty much the most straightforward program that we would apply. This would align with any sort of inclusionary housing program the, the town could adopt. It refers to the San Mateo County's Average Median Income Index, which then translates into rentals, rental rates for studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, which, which I think pretty much covers every, we're not gonna, we don't usually see three-bedroom ADUs. So this gives a snapshot of what that would look like. It calls out extremely low, very low, low, and then I threw the medium, median rate in there as well, so you had some comparison.
And you've sent that out to us?
I'm sorry?
I don't. Oh, is that what you handed out?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, no problem. Because I got a lot of questions on the rates specifically.
I have a question. Question on that? If we wanted to, rather than using a table like this, could we just set a rate?
Yes.
Say, say we said 1,000 for, 1,500 for one bedroom, 2,000 bedroom. They obviously come in below, very low, but they're in, I mean, they're, we could set a rate.
But when we talk about the incentive behind creating a program like this, it's really to capture and document any low-income units that satisfy the RENA requirement. And this table aligns with RENA standards elsewhere. So this translates to HCD much better if we were to assign our own values for a one-bedroom at low income, because this, this comes from...
Why is this better than if we assigned our own values, if our own values are below what, I mean, in, in deed restriction, you usually say you comply with one of those categories, right?
Sure.
And I don't know what is normal. I guess that's a separate question, is what's normal? Which category is the normal kind of thing that people comply with when they do deed restriction?
So for deed-restricted ADUs, there's no normal at this point. This would be a very progressive, advanced program to launch for ADUs. There's, as far as I know, the city of San Diego has a deed-restricted program.
Right.
That has been dramatically impactful in getting deed-restricted ADUs.
You've gotten lots of good press.
But I haven't seen another jurisdiction.
Resolution has to choose one category.
Yes.
That, and you don't know which category that is?
I do. There's, there's an option. An applicant can do very low income for a period of seven years, or low income for a period of 15 years.
Do these numbers freeze at the 23? You're using 23 numbers. Do they change? So three years from now, it'll be whatever the standard is in San Mateo County?
Absolutely.
So it does vary. So that's why you can't do a set.
Well, and so...
You could do a set.
The benefit is...
Even if you did your own set, when you submit the documentation as to HCD for verification that you've created this innovative program and look at all the units that we're capturing, if you were to, say, establish a one-bedroom rate at $2,000 a month, HCD would look at that and say, okay, well, that's, that's not technically a very low-income unit. That's a low-income unit, but yet you're requiring a lower rent than what that upper standard would be.
Yeah.
So they're still gonna, whatever we would come up with on our own, they would translate into their own vernacular.
On the time.
Yeah.
So it's changes.
I don't agree. If somebody builds an ADU, and we've given them incentive, and they build an ADU and they apply to have one deed restricted, I think that we're going a step too far by saying, and this is what you have to rent it for. I, I real, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Excuse me, you guys. Brittany, would you prefer to do your whole presentation, and then we ask questions, or do you want to stop at each item? What would you prefer?
It's at the pleasure of the council if you would like to discuss each item. There's only three.
So only three. So, all right, so how will we pause at this one, and I ask, does anyone have questions?
I'd have a, so that San Diego program is interesting. Did they, are they certified by the state? Is that an HCD approved?
They are.
Okay.
And, and lots of positive publicity.
Right. I think it's a very cool idea. I like the idea that the deed, the income level dictates how long the deed restriction is. Very clever. I think that's interesting. My worry about setting the rent is that I wouldn't want to set the rent levels low enough where it would be viewed as disincentivizing renting your ADUs by HCD. That's my worry. So.
I'll, no question, I'll just make a comment adding on to that. I just think that if, to the extent that we can follow what the San Mateo County numbers are for creating in our area, the income extremely low, very low, that kind of variant, you know, tiers, it's a standard, and we should go with it instead of trying to recreate the wheel. And I know you're thinking, you're thinking that we would maybe incentivize it more, but I just think, you know, these government agencies kind of talk the same back and forth. I would keep it that way.
I want to correct something I said earlier about San Diego's program. It's actually, and I put this in the November staff report, a 15-year commitment for moderate-income ADUs and a 10-year commitment for very low or low income.
Okay.
For very low or low?
Or low.
Instead of seven?
Instead of seven.
Okay, so 10 and 15.
Those, but those, that's a good, that's a good bomb.
I like that.
Do you support following that sort of tiered model?
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea. Strutry, how should I handle meeting, George? We're going off and discussing and not answering questions, and we're not taking public comment. So.
You can take public comment at any point, so you can...
Should we, would you be better to, should we pause here and take public comment on just this bonus program?
I think that would be helpful. Yeah.
All right, so let me call for public comment on this item, which is a bonus ADU program. Carol, please.
Maybe we'll go quick. So I'm not speaking on behalf of myself now, but the Atherton Housing Coalition, of which you know I'm a member, had a meeting. And there are nine of us who are involved in real estate and in development, mostly commercial, were opposed to the second ADU for a couple of reasons. First of all, please, please, think of a mental image in your head that you are the neighbor, you're not the owner of the property. These two-acre properties, because I have five across the street from me and one next door, they have houses on them that are anywhere from 19,000 to 22,000 square feet, one of them across the street from me. They're not small. They have a separate garage. Now, you're gonna have an ADU that's probably gonna be 1,200 square feet. Now, you put a second one on. That parcel, two acres is not that big, believe it or not, is gonna be loaded with buildings. You, as the neighbor, are looking onto that, and we have pretty big heights now for ADUs. We also don't think anybody's gonna be stupid enough to encumber their deed for 15 years. So it's not gonna happen, guys. But we have a thought. And the thought is, we could see our way to that second ADU if it were over the garage. So not another separate building. And we wouldn't even encumber it, we wouldn't encumber the deed. We'd, we'd go for it. We think that is a better alternative than loading up the property with a bunch of buildings that the neighbor will see. Further, I don't, I have to defer to Brittany on this. I read that the state is considering allowing ADUs to be sold separately. Do we want two ADUs sold separately on a two-acre parcel? I don't think so. By the way, Portola Valley allows two ADUs, but you have to have three acres. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to offer a point of...
Question, is this state law?
Uh, no. This, this goes beyond state law. The clarification that I wanted to provide is that, um... Sorry, I'm blinking.
Is this about it being the third unit?
No. What was it that Carol said about state law?
The conduvisation of state?
The conduvisation, thank you.
An opt-in program.
Sure, exactly. So the state did pass legislation that allows the separate sale of an ADU from the single-family home property, but the local jurisdiction has to adopt that program. It's optional.
I don't agree.
And so at this point, there's no indication that the council has had any interest in that. We have not yet, we haven't proposed that.
So we're not required?
An issue.
Not requi-
Correct.
And I, I, we're not required to have a bonus ADU program either, are we?
Correct.
Because, you know, we're having, you know, I've said several times at this meeting or similar meetings, you know, I really don't think we should be turning the properties into a bunch of small, small house rentals where the owner isn't even living there, because there's no requirement that we can put there. And that would be, that, you know, we've always said all along, we were going to do all these rules to protect the neighbors, and setting up a little village next door to your house, I don't think protects you. I don't care how high the fence is.
Can you clarify that you said a third unit, that it's actually not a second unit? They already can have two. Can you clarify that?
Sure. So that is the JADU that's allowed internally, the, or an AD, what, sorry, and an ADU, and then a detached ADU. So this would be in addition to that.
Yeah, that'd be four.
Plus the main house.
Oh, wow.
Right now, you, you're, you're not, by state law doesn't authorize you to have an internal, it has a JADU, but, and an ADU, right? But not also an internal ADU. State law allows...
State law allows all three that you just mentioned.
What, is that new?
That is a change in 2022 that we are now seeing HCD respond to ordinances that say you can have the internal, internal JADU or internal ADU. That was changed in and in 2022, and HCD is just now catching it, and it's a comment in many of the, the letters that are coming back on ADU ordinances.
Just, so the internal ADU is different from detached ADU in that you build it within your existing walls? Or is this like you can expand your house and call it?
If you had a guest house, and you were converting, well, if you had a pool house, and you converted the pool house to an ADU, that would satisfy the internal ADU provision.
Even though it's not connected to my house?
Even though it's not connected. So then additionally, you could build another structure where you're detached ADU.
I, as a homeowner, can convert my pool house into an ADU. That's my internal ADU. I can pop a JADU to the side of my house, and I can build an ADU as a full...
At the front setback.
Yes, right.
What about, what about the attached ADU, which would be in addition to the end of?
And the attached ADU, the JADU are the same?
No.
No. ADU is just no kitchen, small tiny kitchen.
You could work it within those categories to get...
Pool house considered internal, it's usually an outside structure.
Because it's a detached structure, and the provision allows conversion of a detached structure under what I'm characterizing as an internal ADU.
So then that would not count as your floor area ratio?
Correct.
That would...
Yeah, so you would get that back.
You would get that back, and so you could add on to your main house.
You could do that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I disagree with the, the FAR exemption if you have an attached ADU, because people will expand their house and use it as an office, not, not rent it out. If you want the FAR, then it has to be rented, but I don't think that that's gonna happen. So I'd like to exempt attached ADUs from the FAR exemption that we've already had discussed.
Okay, so it seems as though we're on comments on this particular item. So does anybody want to take a position on each of these, on this one?
This is the bonus ADU program?
Yes. We're talking about, we're giving comment on the bonus ADU program right now.
Okay, maybe my comment.
All right, go ahead.
My comment is I don't like it.
I like the idea of creating a program that requires deed restriction if somebody's gonna do something, because I think that's gonna play well with HCD. And I don't think it's gonna impact us very much, honestly. I, I mean, I, I, there'll be some people that do it, but I don't think that anybody's gonna be seriously adversely impacted by it, given what we've talked about as the parameters. And let's face it, they're not all gonna get rented. So I think it plays well with HCD. I don't like the idea of creating a fourth home or residence on a property that's just two acres, but...
That seems a bit much.
How do you?
It seems a bit much, but, you know, I mean, either we're gonna get approved by HCD or not, and if we're not, we're gonna see more apartments being built. That, I mean, that's the bottom line.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, I'm still processing this ADU change. If I'm gonna pop an ADU on top of a garage, what kind of ADU is that?
Yeah.
Because that's an existing structure.
So if you're building, well, if it's an existing structure, that would be the detached ADU.
No, the interior, if it's a detached garage...
And you're adding an ADU above it?
Yes.
That would fall under the detached ADU category.
If you converted a pool house, it would be, that's detached, it would be considered an attached ADU?
It would be considered what I classified as an internal ADU, because you're just changing this, the land use or the space within that structure.
HCD kind of, kind of talks about it as a conversion.
A conversion.
Okay, it's a conversion of a detached unit.
Yes.
Got it.
And, and if you convert a detached unit, it's considered an attached unit.
And because, so if you convert a garage, that's different.
There's no distinction at this point, really, so much with attached or non-detached.
Well...
Unless you're only, unless you can only build that extra ADU because it's detached.
I'm confused.
How do we enforce something like this?
I'm totally confused.
How do we know that they're gonna actually, is there any enforcing it? So we're gonna have them deed-restrict it, which is a piece of paper. We can expect them when they sell the house, but we don't have any hammer to say you actually have to do it. So it's just a free license to anyone with a two-acre property to build a, a third unit.
So presumably, if this program were to move forward, it would align with any inclusionary housing program that the town adopted. We would work with our partners at Local 21 to do income verification. Income verification usually happens on an annual basis, and that would span for whatever the term of the restriction is or the timeframe is.
But that's if they actually chose to do it. So let's say I build this third unit, and I deed-
So, let's say I build this third unit, and I deed restricted, so I go through what the requirement is here. We don't have the hammer to say, is it rented?
In order to get their certificate of completion, they would have had to already go through the verificat, income verification program.
Of a person, of an actual resident that's moving in?
Yes.
So, we can verify it by that?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah, um, you know, the, the comment earlier, and even here, was, well, uh, they're not all gonna be rented at any time. Well, the rental period of time, which I do not like, is 30 days. You know what 30 days is? 30 days is a long-term rental on, on, uh
Airbnb.
Yeah, Airbnb, that's what it's gonna be. So, it could be a party house, it could be a lot of things. I, you know, I really think filling up properties with ADUs is not right, and I, I don't think we should be adding as many. I prefer that we change the 30 days to six months, but I'm told that that's a state law. I don't know if that is or not, I haven't verified it, but that's what Georgia indicated. But I do think that, that, that's what some of these in this area are going to become. They're gonna become rental units for 30 days or less, or 60 days, but they're not gonna be six months or helping out in this area. That's, that's, you know, so I'm, I'm against the, the bonus, and I'm against, uh, if we can change the, the period of time, at least six months, which would be my recommendation.
Is that 30 days required, is that a law?
The law is that you can't rent the ADU for less than 30 days.
Then, so that's a less than. Can we attach a timeframe to this bonus, which is voluntary, that we're creating? So, could we say you have to minimal rent it for a year, or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, well, then we should do that for all the ADUs.
I have a, I have another question. Um, for the bonus ADU program, if someone builds an ADU that's less than 800 square foot, would the bonus, would have, how does that work in terms of setbacks and all that kinda stuff? If we create a bonus ADU rule, would we be able to, for the bonus ADU, require regardless of square footage, that they follow our rules?
Yes.
Well, that should be added, for sure, absolutely.
I believe that's already in there, but I'll double check.
Well, I'm just like, if you're adding a third, like, that's when, like, the space issue and
So, what feed
Right, I'm just curious how the
So, what feedback do you need from us?
Whether or not you would like to include the bonus ADU program with a deed restriction requirement, and if you want a tiered program.
And the setbacks that we just mentioned, okay?
I think, I think what's been presented here is appropriate.
So, we have one, Rick, how do you feel about it?
About what?
This whole program, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to move us forward by getting everyone's input on this item.
Well, before I found out that you could have an internal ADU as an additional structure, I was positive about it.
Yeah, now it's a bit, a lot, yeah.
The, the benefit, as Councilmember Goldie indicated, though, is the deed restriction component, which makes it attractive to HCD. It's just that there, the new state law says you can have a lot more, which makes it more of a fourth ADU instead of a third.
Yeah.
I like the idea of having a program that has deed restriction, because I think that'll play well with HCD.
Agreed.
I, and I don't think that it will vary, I, I really don't think it'll adversely impact Atherton.
Yeah.
I like the idea of saying it needs to be rented for six months at a minimum, uh...
Okay.
A year, even a year would be great.
That would be a school year, like a nine month, you know?
Yes. School year. Yeah.
Six months.
Six months?
No, a school year is nine, is, you know, nine to 10 months. They need, and then they need a month or two to move out and move in, so it could be a year, but nine months is fine.
All right, so if you have support for that one, then we can move on with the next.
Do you need a motion or anything?
We should probably talk about what the deed restriction should be. I would like Yeah, there's, I, I like what San Diego did in two tiers. They did very low for 10 years, they did moderate for 15 years. I think we could do low for 15 years. I don't think, I, I think that would play well with HCD. And, and frankly, I don't think anyone who's building an ADU to rent it is doing it to make money. They're doing it because they don't want to have an apartment building be built down the block from them, really, and
So, I'm hearing low for 15 years and very low for 10 years.
That's what I would recommend.
I'll agree with that. I think that, well, yeah, we want to help
I think they're gonna view that as too strict.
And, and actually, these numbers are kind of not very, very low.
It's like, what?
I mean, you know what I mean?
Based on our standards, though.
Right.
It's based on the Bay Area.
To Councilmember Holland's question is whether or not that's too strict. Uh, I would point to the fact that we would be one of the first jurisdictions creating this kind of program, and the fact that it's even there to promote some sort of documentation of low-income housing in the spectrum of ADUs would be beyond, so I think there's, there's not a concern here I have about it being too strict.
Okay. Brownie points.
Right. Notable.
I think that's an easy fit for us.
I do, too, yeah.
So, do we need a motion to pass this?
They already voted, they just need direction.
If you want, I'll introduce the ordinance, and we'll introduce
Okay. All right, so should we move on to the next item, then?
Yes.
And, and I, I'd like to say with these, I'd say, do the same thing in terms of taking them back to the Builders Roundtable that we did with the previous ones.
So, then you would be continuing this hearing
Well
And I have brought these topics to the Builders Roundtable, and the draft ordinance already.
Okay, is that true there, Carol?
December. That this was raised, uh, this item was brought to the Builders Roundtable, the draft ordinance, after the Planning Commission, maybe
If it's gone, I think it's fine.
City councils.
And the answer's no.
Can you, sorry? You're okay. We can't hear you when we go back and watch.
The way, the acoustics in this room are atrocious, because we can't hear anything that you all are saying. It's a real problem, especially if you're focused, if you're talking that way, we can't hear a thing.
Get that bigger mic.
It's, it's been terrible tonight.
It's kinda dark, face.
Guys, I know you want to look great before HCD, we all do, we all wanted to prove plan. But what you are talking about when you say, this'll look great before HCD, that is not what the residents want. You represent the residents. When you have nine that have come tonight and said, we don't want bonus ADUs, including some of the biggest names in this town, and one of the biggest names in the state that suggested putting it over garages and forget the deed restriction, you need to start respecting the residents. We don't want a bunch of structures in our backyard, period.
Yep, yep, thank you for saying that.
Thank you for saying that, and that, I would like to bring that up for discussion, because that's a modification to this. What if we were to say you can have this bonus ADU over a garage and put that restriction on it?
I don't want an extra bonus, I don't want extra ADUs. I don't like a bonus ADU plan, period, the end. I'd like to minimize the number of little houses we're having in the backyard. I don't wanna see communities in, in my neighbor's property. They wanna have one unit, or have somebody inside their house, that's their business, okay? But if they rent the whole yard, they're going on vacation, and they'll be gone, and it'll just be a rental unit that will degrade. And, and it may be an ADU party location, because it's gonna be 30-day rentals.
No, because we're expecting that.
I'm not in favor, you said only, we could only modify the time if it was a bonus.
No, that's not true.
Well, we're talking about bonus right now. We're talking about a bonus program, so, and we did agree that we were going to have a minimum of nine months on the bonus program. So, now what we're proposing is, do we want to also say that it's not a new building, and it's going to be over an existing structure like a garage? That's another limit we can put on this, if we want.
And this is only on
Discuss that for a minute.
This is only on, uh, properties two acres and above.
Yep. Two acres and above, but I think the point of not building another building is a really good point. So, do we wanna consider adding that to this? And do you have an opinion on what your advice would be on, on adding a restriction for it to be over a garage? Would it still serve your purposes in terms of showing a program that
It wouldn't hinder the program.
Wouldn't hinder the program, and, and Rick, in your opinion, you were very interested in the idea of having this, uh, program, but you were, you were less inclined to wanna have additional buildings. Does having it over the garage solve that for you?
Let me, let me ask a question. If, if somebody, could you do, could you deed restrict if somebody converted, uh, a pool house?
If it was their bonus ADU, yes.
But, but wait, but my understanding right now is that state law allows building a detached ADU, a J-ADU, and converting a detached building to an ADU. And if someone chose to do all three of those, could you require that, that, you know, one of, one of those ADUs be deed restricted, or can you not do that?
Of, of the ADUs the state requires us to allow, no, we cannot put deed restrictions
It would be the fourth one.
Be the fourth.
It would be the fourth one, and it would have to be only the garage. So, we're, all of these, that's the point she was just making, it, you now can do three, so what we're talking about is a fourth. So, but we could do this whole program, but say it can only be over an existing structure, like a garage.
So, I just clarify a couple of things. A J-ADU is internal with the main structure.
It can also be attached.
Attached.
Yes.
Well, you know, to the main structure.
Right.
So, some of our main structures, as Carol brought up, are 17,000, 22,000 square feet. These are monster homes, I mean, monster homes. And so, at one point, when I first got on council, all these monster homes, people were up in arms and saying, you can't build these 10,000-square-foot houses, these 7,000-square-foot houses, because you're building monster homes. And they have grown exponentially over the years, okay? So, um, you're gonna punch out a little bit, and so it's not like a separate, um, structure, okay? Then you've got your garage, and then you've got your ADU. So, um, the, the, the picture of a property with, um, all these little buildings all over it, scattered all over, is just not, that doesn't happen, I don't think, so much, because you've got your garage and your pool house already, and that's a separate structure. And then if you convert your pool house, or build an AD, ADU above your garage, and then maybe one other structure. So, you're only kinda adding one other structure to make four. So, I, you know, I just think that, um, the way it all works out is probably not as egregious as we're imagining, but I've always said that instead of finding other ways to meet the arena numbers, uh, we're, we're gonna have a town full of smaller little buildings all over our properties, and that's just what we're, that's what this ADU program is gonna do. I mean
That's why I like Carol's idea of restricting it to be over a building that's already existing. So, now we're not covering the proper
But I'm saying we can do that.
You, you do like, so you favor the idea of doing this, but doing it with over, with the restriction that's over an existing garage, or an existing
Or a pool house, yeah.
Or an existing structure. So, how does
And some people have out, sheds, right? Like little storage units that they've built, uh, permitted on their property.
So, are we, or where, where are we in getting in favor of doing the bonus program, not doing the bonus program? And then doing the bonus program, but having it be restricted so that it's not a new building, but existing on a garage or an existing structure?
And if someone build a detached structure, and then put an ADU on top of it anywhere on the property, because they can build the detached structure tomorrow.
I'm not in favor, okay?
They can build a detached structure.
I don't know why we have to take this vote five times.
Right? And that detached structure would be what? Um, a pool house, or a little party house, or a little, you know, shed, or something? And that's within our current building zones, building code zones, building
Yeah, it could be like a gym.
Carol's point, they, they're kinda focusing on it wanting to be toward where the property's already centrally located on a garage, on a two-acre parcel, putting it out, building out back, and then putting an ADU on top of it.
But again, it would be respecting all of our design standards, so they could build their
With all the setbacks.
All their other stuff.
Ten feet, ten feet isn't very much.
On a two-acre property, ten feet's not much at all. So, and I think that this all started with, you know, Rick saying, you know, if we're gonna allow on a one acre, right, uh, an ADU, I mean, this was early on the process. We were kinda newbies about the whole thing. He says, well, if you've got a two-acre property, why don't we allow two, you know, ADUs on there? And then it just kinda mushroomed.
I think the only honest value to this is this deed restriction program, because I think that's gonna play really well with HCD, and I totally disagree that that's something that, Atherton residents are gonna be all up in arms about, because what Atherton residents are up in arms about is they don't want apartment buildings put in near them. And we're trying to find a path to weave the needle through that avoids that. You know, so, uh, honestly, okay, so you have a fourth structure that is on top of a garage rather than an independent 1,200-foot building on your two-acre parcel. I don't, you, you, if in fact you rent all of those, which I think almost zero people will do, you're gonna have that fourth, you know, person living on that property, and I don't think it's a big difference whether they're on top of a garage or in a separate building. I, I don't think it is, but
Building, it's building more, covering more ground.
But I'm okay if that, if you guys feel that that's better, I, I'm okay to go with that. I, I don't feel strongly about it. The thing I do feel strongly about is I think that we get some leverage if we create this, uh, deed restriction program. And, and I think it's an interesting thing, I mean, I don't know how it'll play with our residents. You know, nobody wants, nobody wants their property restricted.
Right.
So, if people don't understand it, and they just react to deed restriction, they're not gonna feel good about it, because nobody wants, none, none of us want our properties restricted in any way.
I kinda wish that we
But in fact, if you're creating an ADU that, you know, it, it says if you rent it, you can't rent it for more than this, then that is only gonna apply to those people that would be renting it, trying to make some money on it. And I don't think anybody's building an ADU in Atherton to try to make money on it. It's gonna cost you $600,000 to build the ADU. You're not gonna make money on it in 50 years.
Well, that gets to the argument again, then I wanna make sure they actually rent it. I don't want this just to be a freebie for anyone who has a two-acre property, that they build it and don't rent it, so we have to be able
We can't require them to rent it. You can't require them to rent it.
Nope, we can't.
We're saying with the deed restriction, if you do rent it
Yeah, if you do rent it, you can't rent it for more than X.
That's just a freebie, if you're not requiring it to rent it, it's a total freebie.
Can't require them
Exactly.
That's the problem with the relying on ADUs altogether. So, we are believing that when our residents and their public comment have said that they prefer ADUs because they want to do this, we are taking them at their word, that that is what they want, and that's what they plan to do. So, from my perspective, I think, I, I don't feel strongly about the garage or no garage. I think if someone wants to build an ADU, and they, and they're willing to have it be deed restricted, I think we should make it easy for them to do that, because the goal is to have these deed restrict, I think having deed-restricted ADUs will be helpful for us to make, to be certified, and then maintain our certification. So, I think if it has, if people want it over the garage, it's only fine by me. If we have them otherwise, that's fine by me, too, so.
Elizabeth, do you have an opinion on this?
I think I've already voiced it, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Uh, we, I thought we already agreed that you could do an ADU over a garage. I have no problem with an ADU over a garage.
This is an additional one.
Uh, yeah, well, now we're getting to the bonus program, okay? So, look, I was for the bonus program when we were adding a second and making it deed restricted. When we're adding a fourth, I don't agree with, I don't care where you put it, I don't agree with it. So, I'm a no on the bonus program, because, because the state caught up and passed us. We were talking about adding a second one, and then the state beat us to it.
Yep.
All right, so it keeps growing and growing and growing. All right, so it keeps growing and growing and growing. I'd like it to stop.
I'm with you. This, the three ADU program applies to all properties in Atherton, so.
You can put in more. You can put a JADU, a detached ADU, or this ADU, and then have a, have a uh, a pool house change. You can have four today.
Yeah.
And now you get a fifth?
No, 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 no.
No.
This would be the fourth.
For two acres.
This would be the fourth.
I believe Councilmember Woodmer was including the primary residents.
Oh, okay. Got it. So, I would, I wish that we could have this in our back pocket and only pull it out if we need it. So I wish we could go with the other things that we're sure of and hold this one in our back pocket as a negotiation thing, is what I would like to see happen. But I don't know how to make that happen. So as we stand right here, you guys, you need to hear from us. So we need a motion, and we need to have consensus on this one. Does anyone have a motion that they want to go forward?
The, the motion would be for the whole thing. You're just providing consensus direction for this component.
For this particular part.
Feel like you know where we're standing.
We're gonna pull it out in the end.
Well, it's not what it is to start with.
Was there was support for the bonus ADU program with a nine month rental requirement with low for fifteen years of a deed restriction and very low for ten years? The caveat being, where do you stand with the, it must be over a garage?
I, I personally like the over the garage, because you're not making yet another structure. Those are our preferred ADUs across the board. So if you're gonna incentivize any, that's the one you want to do, where you're not making another whole building and covering more ground, in my view.
Also two story. It's a second story.
Yeah, but i- in terms of the two story, it was already, it's only like X number of feet from what we already have. It's not a full, like, we didn't just double the size. It's like a little bit more.
And, and I'm a little concerned in that over a garage kind of definition has a lot of wiggle room in it, or over an existing structure has a lot of wiggle room in it, and and you, it's gonna have the same effect as just putting that building out there. In fact, it could have a worse effect. If you're putting a single story ADU out at the back forty of a two acre parcel, ten feet off the setback, but you can't do that. So now you're gonna build a he said, she said shed out there, and then put the ADU on top of it, because you can now do that. And now you got a two story structure.
Can you build that additional unit? Why would you be able to build that additional unit in the first place?
Can I ask a question? So if we set this has to go over and attach things, someone built an ADU, an eight hundred square foot ADU. And then we say you could build something on an existing structure. You could put a second ADU on top of an ADU. And have a due place, right? If I are definite, is that a thing? Am I, did I land on something interesting?
That was a point of clarification that I was going to ask this body. Um, if you are looking just at allowing ADUs above existing garages, which is a topic that we have that's coming up next. Um, if it's any accessory structure, and then in that case, could it also be another ADU? And those are distinctions that we haven't yet discussed. I haven't heard feedback on, um, so I would, I would ask you that question.
Can we move on to the, if we're gonna vote for all of it at the end, and I suspect we're gonna end up pulling some items out, but let's just go forward with the next one. So are you okay?
Sure.
Just to keep things going?
So then the next slide deals with where we left off on ADUs above detached garages, and that was really over the privacy discussion and what to do about an eight foot tall fence, where it should go, and how to incorporate it with landscaping. So at the November hearing, what came before you was a requirement for a solid eight foot tall fence required for all ADUs. And that the fencing would be located for the entire front, rear, or side property lines, whichever were adjacent to the ADU. Based on the feedback that we heard, we changed that, uh, that language to be applicable only to ADUs when located when, within the town's required setback areas, so within the ten feet or within the front setback, or ADUs that are located above detached garages. We also said that the solid eight foot tall fencing required, is required unless there's existing landscaping. And the way that I approached this was acknowledging existing landscaping that already complied with um, Atherton Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point five zero, because that means that that landscaping has already been reviewed by the town. It's uh, set by standards for maintenance and perpetuity. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel in terms of what we would want to see and how it would be maintained.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that standard though says that you built a new house, and you put something down, then, and it's gonna grow over five years. Not acceptable, not acceptable. Because people put these, even today, I think that the, the, the rule we have is terrible.
Okay.
Because you, they put these little plants there, they may or may not water them. There's no way they're gonna grow five years, and no one comes back and checks it, but the, but the neighbors got that as a problem. Okay? And gets the light shining into their house. Yes, they're pointed down, but they do put light out. You know, et cetera, et cetera. And so it's, it's, it, I don't agree with that last section where you said it, as long as it complies with the municipal code, because the municipal code is wrong. Okay? When we're building these houses, especially large houses, we need to have tall structures, and it's gotta be in from the beginning. You know, a four foot mini tree, or a large uh, English uh, laurel, right?
Keep it to questions, because this is gonna go on all night. So, she's doing her presentation, so can we ask questions, then do comments after?
Do whatever you want. You're the mayor.
So the way that I approached this was to suggest that it has to be existing landscaping. So the landscaping in theory is already there, and it's been required by the town. This also gives the town another opportunity to go and inspect that landscaping, to address any sort of deficiencies that may have come up relative to Councilmember Woodmer's complaints, such as our concerns, such as complaints about lighting, porosity of the landscaping, deficiency in the actual growth of the tree. The fact that we're referencing existing landscaping is intended to address that concern.
Is, is there a way to add language line of sight? Because that's very, like, if you want to have no line of sight to the other house, that's a language that makes it I'm trying to figure out how to quantify it. And he's right about the size of the trees, although I thought we addressed already the trees being bigger and all of that in another meeting. So I, I think that what Bill was saying has already been addressed. But is there a way to use the language that quantifies that, you know, mature landscaping to be a line of sight?
I think.
Is there? Say we could address the term existing landscaping that obscures the line of sight from the adjacent property.
Here's line of sight. Yeah, that would work for me.
Okay.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean.
Any other questions?
Well.
Well, are you done with your presentation on this item?
Uh, the last bullet point I had was that the fencing requirement is specified to only apply to the rear inside interior property lines, and does not apply to front inside street facing property lines.
Why is that?
This was because there was a direction or concerns raised by the council relative to having eight foot tall fencing along the front property line.
But, but if there's an ADU within the ten, within ten feet of the front property line, maybe we want to require that.
We allowed to for?
Yes, you can require that.
Yeah, or even if it's a, if it's a J, it's a small ADU, five hundred square feet or less, and it's right on the property line in the front. You know, we would want to have that screen.
Okay, we can put that back in.
Yeah.
I, I disagree that that is the best approach, and you have to kind of consider that in the front property line, if you want to have eight foot tall fencing, whatever kind of fencing that you're gonna build, um, you're gonna end up with a walled city.
We already have that.
Already have.
We have that already.
No, not, not totally.
You don't only have, you don't only have the walled city if somebody builds an ADU right on the property line.
Well, what, what about ten feet back?
No, uh, there's no ten foot setback issue on the front property line. It's like a fifty foot setback? No. No, I understand, but if it, but if it's more than eight hundred square feet, what's the setback for the front property line?
None.
Not four feet?
Sorry, no, sorry.
It's not four feet?
For a twelve hundred foot ADU, isn't the setback fifty feet?
It's whatever the front.
It's, yeah, right.
It's not ten feet.
Twelve hundred, but if it's eight hundred square feet or less, it can be right on the property.
Yeah, it can, you can ignore that, the four foot requirement, and put it on the property line if it's in the front of the house, which is the worst place to do that.
Yeah.
It's been done at one property in Menlo Park, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, it hasn't been done in Atherton yet, so.
Then I'm seeing what the.
This hopefully is a mood issue, but, but Elizabeth, would you rather have an ADU right on the front property line and no fence? That's the option.
The whole length of the property line, right? Not just in front of the ADU.
We already have that.
True.
Not on every property.
Not on every property, but what is it, on a number of, a number of properties, they have, they have a six foot fence, and then they have a ten foot hedge.
True.
It's got a lot of property.
One seventy Atherton Avenue.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so are you done with your presentation on this one?
On this slide, yes.
Okay, so can I call for any clarification questions? Does anybody have any clarification questions? We're all getting tired.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, public comment, please. Step up to the mic, please.
So Brittany, I'm a little confused. Um, and I think there needs to be, this needs to be really clear in the regulation. I am, I have an existing house. I'm not building a new house. I'm putting an ADU in the backyard. Do I, if an eight foot fence is required, isn't around the whole perimeter of the property, which I think would be ridiculous? Or is it only, and this needs to be really spelled out, in the area immediately impacted by the ADU?
So the, the feedback from council at the last meeting was that they wanted to extend for the full property line of the, uh, adjacent.
And just that side.
To the ADU.
Adjacent to the ADU, correct. Not the whole property line.
No, right.
No, 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 no.
But.
Not the whole property.
But if it's, wait a minute, if it's at the corner, like the back corner.
As they're almost always on a back corner.
Then it'd be that line and that line. Yeah.
But you'd have to build the fence unless there's landscaping that provides.
Exactly. If existing landscaping has one hundred percent screening of a certain height, then it's okay, because that's planning commission wine. I just wanted to be sure that's really, really, really clear, that it's not the whole property where you have to have that eight foot fence. So you're in the back, do you have to have it down the entire back, back line of the property? Or only half of it, because the ADU is sitting over on the side? The whole thing? So if you're in a back corner, you have to have it down the whole back. If you don't have screening, plus the whole side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what.
That needs to be really clear.
Yes, item number two here.
Thank you.
It says, the required fence shall extend along the entire side or rear property line adjacent to the new ADU.
So if you want to put it, yeah.
Well, that would be, yeah.
Around your whole property line, eight feet, you put an ADU here and an ADU here. Right?
Moving on, oh, sorry.
Any other questions? So do we want to open it to comment now? We got public comment. Any other public comment on this one or questions?
I, I have one comment.
Okay.
Which is, in changing the language on the screening, I think it's really important that we be able to not, to avoid building that fence as long as there's screening that screens the ADU. And I would say, rather than line of sight language, which I think is unclear, uh, if what we would require is an eight foot fence, that screening should block the view at least eight feet high.
Well, yes.
And, and I think that language would be clearer than to say line of sight. So.
And I actually think, just to add on to that, I actually think if there's existing landscaping that is in that back area, it's gonna be, it's probably a laurel hedge or a pittus form hedge or something, and it probably is ten feet. Then, you know, your gardeners are always kind of hedging it up, and so it's probably taller than any fence that's back there that you put.
Could be, but he's saying make it a requirement.
Yeah.
At least.
At least.
At least eight feet.
Yeah.
And, and, and that at least eight feet is screens the building at least eight feet high. So that says, if you've got a hedge in this portion of, you're, you're, let's say you're gonna put the ADU in the corner, and you've got hedging going down both sides of that corner that's at least eight feet tall, but halfway down the property, that hedge ends and.
That'd be okay.
That happens, that's okay.
Yeah.
You don't have to have the hedging go, you don't have to have the landscape screening go down the entire property line. It's got to screen the building, where the building is.
But I still, I like the saying the limit of a le- a minimum eight, but how do we get language that gets the idea across, so you can't have spindy little trees, so I can like see right through the window, you know?
Well, that's gonna be an arborist judgment, that it's green.
Screening line of sight, if there's some language you guys can come up with to get that idea across, so you can't, you know, I, I want to not be able to see it.
The challenge is, is that it has to be an objective requirement. It can't be subject to the opinion of the arborist. It has to be explicitly stated in the code.
All right, so just never come up with something.
Yeah, something like, he, he didn't like the line of sight idea, but you know the intention. The intention is that it's dense, it covers at least eight feet, which is what we're saying the fence has to be. But some sort of verbiage that gets the idea that you can't see the other house.
Okay.
Yeah, you could say that the, the landscape screening is it, it uh, hides the ADU to at least eight feet.
Okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, so work on some language for that, because that would, that would solve my issue with it. Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
One more thought, because somebody brought it up to me today. Um, if you already have an existing six foot fence, you can't just put a two foot trellis on top of it and has the hatch marks to achieve eight feet. It has to be solid screening.
I agree.
A lot of us go ahead to get around the six foot rule, we add a trellis on top and see right through it.
So you could do it if the trellis was not see-through. So this business of being it obscure, so if there were a way to do that addition without incurring the full expense, but it would be solid.
And there are trellises that are solid, that aren't see-through.
Right, then we need to say, you know.
Yes.
A two foot trellis is allowed as long as it's solid.
Obscures the view.
But you've got that hash mark.
Since we're here, I'm going to ask if it needs to be, if it, if it has to be opaque and not translucent.
Opaque and not translucent.
Solid doesn't necessarily mean that the light can't pass through.
It, got it.
And so when you get into the real nuances of screening.
Fake.
Okay.
Yeah, because, yeah, somebody might put up a plexiglass or, you know, a, yeah.
I've seen it done, which is why I'm asking now instead of in February.
That's my, not, thank you for doing that. Most people are gonna build something that they like.
All right, you want to go on? Do we have any more?
Yeah, we can move on.
We have any more questions? You want to go to the next one, and then in the end, we're gonna bring it around and try to vote on it? And come up with a.
I thought we were voting this.
Well, I think we approve this one.
Yeah.
You think we approve this one?
No, it says we have to vote at the end. I know it's correct.
Yeah, that's what we were saying at the end.
Make a motion to introduce the ordinance as amended.
As amended, so it's gonna be a very complicated one that takes some out, and I'm not recapping it, so.
It will come back for second reading.
Okay.
Then we can amend it again.
Maybe we can do the, uh.
Oh, it could, it could come back as first again. Uh, so you get a chance to look at all of Brittany's verbiage changes, and then it'll be a second reading again. You can do it either way.
Does that give us enough time for the process that you're facing right now and all, all the dates and stuff?
We're.
Yeah, sure.
We're past.
Gotta be right.
Any deadline.
Okay.
We're not hitting that deadline.
It's, okay, well, we know that, but, yeah, I was just trying to ask if it's even farther, if we just by doing that, we're creating a big problem.
If anything, it means that we'll be looking at everything clustered together, and we might not want to schedule a lot for March.
Okay, so we want to move on to the tree, Heritage Tree then?
Yes. So at the November meeting, uh, we discussed tree removal requirements and how they are not applicable to ADUs that are eight hundred square feet or less. Uh, this is inconsistent with the, the town's values. Um, and there's really no approach that we've codified that deals with scenarios. This was pointed out by the city manager. When an ADU is expanded. when an ADU is expanded beyond eight hundred square feet after it was used to justify a tree removal. So we took a look at that and we added some language that would address that. In the expansion scenario, the applicant would be required to provide replacement plantings consistent with what would otherwise be required of chapter eight point one zero.
Okay, but so, so if they expand an ADU and it encroaches on a heritage tree and they take it down, they should be able, they'll, they'll be able to take it down provided that they plant replacement trees.
The city would be.
The initial.
They propose an eight hundred square foot ADU or less, and they, while doing that, they use that as an opportunity to remove a heritage tree.
Okay.
Sometime later, they come back and they want to expand it. The tree's already gone. And they want to expand it to twelve hundred square feet. How do we, how do we?
And, and they're complying with the ten foot setback.
Yes.
Okay, fine, then they have, they.
So they have to retroactively look at chapter eight point one zero.
Good idea.
Good idea.
Nice solution.
I don't know why we're allowing them to take down the heritage tree and.
We don't have a choice.
Eight hundred square feet or less is state law, we can't require any.
I just don't understand.
It makes no sense.
So you want to go to your next steps?
Uh, sure, next slide.
Charts is what we're doing.
Did you want to do any sort of public comment on that last slide?
We just need to go back to the bonus ADU program. That's what we did.
Next steps. We would come back from, uh, come back to the city's council with amended language. Sounds like that would be a first reading, reintroduce, a reintroduction and a first reading. That then means a subsequent second reading at some point. We then send the ordinance package to HCD, not the same group of reviewers that would be reviewing our housing element. A different group of reviewers would review the ADU ordinance. They would send it back to us and say, wonderful, perfect, A plus, or you have changes to make, and depending on how, how broad those changes are, we would either have to go all the way back to the planning commissions and start there, or we could come and make modifications to the city council. Um, ultimately, having an ADU ordinance that complies with the housing element programs helps the housing element, housing element review at HCD as well. So that was the last little bullet I had there, and that's the end of my presentation.
I'm sorry to do this, but I have a question back on the above garage one that just popped in my head. When we talked about it before, it says in there, there's verbiage that says an internal staircase, but we had talked about allowing people to have an external staircase that doesn't account. Are both of those wordings in that document or did we not get the second one? Because we were talking about allowing someone to have an external staircase.
Cannot be external.
We didn't agree with that.
No.
It had to be internal.
Discuss was that we would allow the addition of a external stairway if it was covered, if it was, but, but that could be within the setback, that they could put a stairwell in the setback if they add enclosed it, if it's fake.
Right, was that in there this time?
Probably.
I didn't see that, and that was something we talked about before and I didn't see it. And there seemed to be language that was talking about, at one point it says an internal staircase, and then I thought there was something about an external staircase doesn't count to the square footage, but, so it wasn't consistent language in it, and then we didn't have the covered like she just said, so those things.
Internal staircase doesn't, uh, count for, against the square footage.
We were talking about an extra.
If you build an external one and cover it, that extra square feet doesn't count.
That's what we'd said.
That's what we agreed. That you have to have, you have to have a covered, you know, and an enclosed external staircase outside the building and that doesn't, that doesn't affect setbacks and all the other stuff.
Is that in there?
So what's, what's in the ordinance is that you can have an external covered staircase. You cannot have it if it encroaches into the ten foot setback. Because the point of doing the de, the detached above garage ADU was to protect that, that distance.
But then you get into the problem if it's not on the side. Most garages are next to the house, so now you're putting that staircase in the back? And wasn't there a requirement that the address has to face the front street? Is that just the number of the address? You know what I'm trying to say? I want to make sure there's not a gotcha in that verbiage.
The, the entry doesn't have to face a particular direction.
It says the, it entrance has to be off the mains, the main street that the house is.
That, that's the addressing, that's, if, if you are to Berry Lane and you're on the corner, if you're on the corner of Atherton Avenue and Berry Lane.
Okay.
Um, and the ADU is closer in proximity, well, no, if the main residence is fronting onto Atherton and has an Atherton address, then you're required to have an Atherton address for the ADU, even if it's more directly located to Berry Lane.
Okay.
So that doesn't necessarily dictate where the staircase would have to be.
Now, do we have, did we have something that the entrance, preferred entrance was toward the inner part of the property?
Yep, it did.
Yes.
So that means that you're now, the, the entrance is the staircase if it's above the garage. So now you're talking about putting that staircase in what's most likely a breezeway, because the most common configuration is the garage breezeway main house. So if we're going to require the entrance to be on the internal side, you're, you're not allowing that staircase to be on the back, which is where it's going to have to be, because there's probably not room for it in the breezeway.
Why it was enclosed, that you could have an.
But even if it's enclosed, how much are those breezeways? Is that big enough to put a staircase?
Well, we didn't care about breezeways when we looked at this.
This was discussed and effectively tabled because it was left to the architect and the applicant to configure based on a case by case.
So we're not requiring the entrance to be toward the internal on the house? Because that was discussed, but that's not in there anymore?
That was not a recommendation that came out.
Okay.
The November meeting.
But it's not a covered staircase, it's an enclosed staircase. It's an enclosed staircase, not open, not open on the outside, it's enclosed all the way up and on top.
Which is a little beer.
Impact.
Yeah, I understand, but that's a separate issue. If we're.
That's what we discussed though, and that's.
I'm agreeing with that. We're talking about something different right now, which is that we're saying that it can't be on the side, it's got to be on the back.
I don't care where you put it.
In the breezeway, because there's not physically enough room.
So we're left with that line of conversation, what, or discussion really, was that it would be up to the architect.
Okay, so if we've left it free, that's good.
Because so much of the structure would be demolished in order into accommodate the, uh, the, sorry, the ADU located above the garage, that there would be an internal reconfiguration of the garage layout. And when I've seen that move forward before, really what comes out of that is a desire to either have, um, a gracious entry that's read from the actual facade of that structure or an internalized kind of, um, foyer that's separate and distinct from the garage that you can use to access internally, and then the staircase actually reads like part of the unit. And so to give architects grace in order to design that, we, we allowed for exceptions for that space from FAR and from attributing that space to any sort of square footage requirements for the ADU.
And it's not required on a specific side. It's up to them.
Yes.
Fine. So does anyone want to come up with a motion?
I think George has to give us a recap of what. Or no.
I can.
Of course, George, do, yeah.
So I think, as Councilmember DeGoli indicated, you probably need to go back to the bonus program and clarify that one. But as it is right now, it's tiered program, nine month rental, low for fifteen years, very low for ten. Fencing, front property line, uh, eight feet, uh, language to be added to address screening and line of sight, whereas the vegetation needs to be at least eight feet, screening the entirety of the building and be opaque, hides the ADU to at least eight feet, development language for that, and there was no changes to the heritage tree ordinance, uh, recommendations.
So moved.
So the, the motion then would be to incorporate those things with language changes for a renewed first reading at the next meeting, so you can see them again.
Yes. Yes. We have to see them again with fresh eyes. Thank you.
Because we're tired.
Yeah.
Someone move that.
I, I made the motion.
Move what he said.
I did.
No, the motion for first reading, because it's a public hearing introduction.
Oh, I made the motion.
So second, let's move on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a proposal. It's kind of late. We've had a tough discussion. I'd like to have the, uh, EPC Earth Day, since the people are here, and I'd like to move that we table until next meeting, the electrification discussion, with all due respect to Rachel, who's been here. Uh, because, you know, once we get to this hour, we're not making good decisions, we're making quick decisions, and if you're going to continue on, I'm, I'm going to have to depart.
And it just, which is fine, just as a point of clarification, when you continue items to the next meeting, that next meeting will stack up. You've already got the ADU ordinance coming back to you at the next meeting, you've got the fee.
Is there time sensitive? Could it be two for now?
Interject, it is within the mayor's purview to call a special meeting to maybe cover, you know, some, uh, issues.
Or we can do it during our study session.
All right, I, I agree that I would like to put it forward, because it is complicated and there are a lot of questions, and I think we're way too tard, and I do want to do Earth Day because that's coming up.
And they're here.
Let's do.
They're here.
I'd like to note, we do have someone from PCE here as well.
Okay.
Well.
That's item number eight.
I'm sorry, but we wouldn't even be able to hear at this point, we're so tired.
Item number eight is the reach code.
Which we shall determine at a future date.
But item number nine, we should, we should hear, because.
We're going to hear.
Yeah, so Earth Day's up.
Yeah.
So item number nine.
Yes. Item, item number nine.
Yeah, I, item number nine is approval of the twenty twenty four Earth Day work plan and budget as recommended by the environmental program.
You so much, um.
Keep going.
Um, and Rachel, you're on, you have a report for us on this?
Yes.
What do you mean? Um, we'll have, uh, Amy Farrell, the chair of our EPC, kick us off with this presentation on the Earth Day work plan and budget. Can you hear me okay through this microphone?
Yeah, yeah, she has one there too.
Yeah.
What's happening? Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just come up here.
Perfect.
We can make it fast.
Good, good. Five thousand dollars approved.
Yeah, quickly I could talk.
Actually, I was going to ask that we, that we increase the budget um, for this Earth Day event.
Now, we're going to have a discussion.
Going to have a discussion.
Well, um, so really quick, let me just say that I appreciated the chance to talk to most of you and get your comments and collect other comments that came in from staff. Many thanks to Rachel for putting together a super comprehensive work plan. Um, the spirit of this year's event is about the town of Atherton and collaboration amongst, uh, not only our service providers, you've got a whole list as you've seen, but also the other, like ADAPT and other committees. Um, we are very excited about bringing back some well-loved competition from twenty twenty-two, so get your game on and be prepared to go against the chief and others. Um, we're going to have almost.
We'll do whatever it takes.
Cheating like you guys did last time. That was terrible. Our team won.
I can see it's already going to enliven everything, but we'll have, we'll have that. Um, we're also really excited about the different students, so the students from Sacred Heart that I know have reached out to you and, and, um, and we expect to have a nice core group of probably fifteen to twenty students this year. So, um, actually Rachel's already been working with several students from D-Tech and one from MA. So, um, the money, uh, we are asking for five thousand dollars. Uh, what that does not include is food for the volunteers, so personally, with two of my own volunteers who eat a lot of food, I'm okay with them not having food. They can eat before they come. So, and they're big kids. Um, but if you feel strongly that we should have food for volunteers, that's something that we would need to, you know, ask for. Um, we would like to have food set aside for you all and actually a room where you could kind of go put your stuff down, get a glass of water, especially if you're really, you know, talking to a lot of people, so we'll probably do that in main house. Anthony, great. Um, and so where, there, we would like to have some food for you all and drinks. Um, for the volunteers, we were thinking about having some snacks for them, but it's up to you all if you think we could attract more volunteers, keeping in mind that they do get service hours. So they're getting something for doing this in addition to learning about, you know, all the solutions and everything we have in Atherton.
Okay.
So are you asking for more money here or not?
Well, I personally don't think we need to give money for the volunteers for food, but I wanted to get your all's opinion.
Okay, well, sure, do you want to do your whole presentation, then we'll ask our questions?
That's pretty much it.
That was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Good, okay.
Unless you guys have any feedback on the work plan.
I have, I have a lot of, I have questions.
Yeah.
You too.
Last time, we did not have water. I didn't see a water, what's it called, a water buffalo or cam, camel? I never.
Yeah, we only.
The one.
The water animal thing.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't see a budget for that in there, and that was a real big issue, because we don't have, we didn't have enough water fountains. Second, in the past, all of the food trucks have a, uh, two thousand dollar minimum. Part of the reason for giving food to the volunteers is that, um, they, uh, you know, that makes up part of that guarantee. So you had a list of many trucks, but I don't know if any of those are going to come without a minimum guarantee. So I personally would like to see more money, and I, and I think that the volunteers should be fed, because when we did it at MA, they were from my kid's school, there was a, a group of five or six kids who had been there the entire day. By the time they wanted food, there was no food left, so I literally went and bought a loaf of bread for them to eat. So personally, I think that there should be, if they're going to be working all day for free, and it depends, if they're there for two hours, sure not. But a lot of the kids, at least the kids from our school, did the entire day.
Yeah.
So in that case, I do think we should, it doesn't have to be fancy food, but there should be some sort of food. And if you, you do it with them, it allows us to reach our minimums.
So. Yes.
So, um, so we had a student group with, uh,
From Sacred Heart.
The Lempress from Sacred Heart.
Meeting with them.
Can you please, you know.
I'm meeting with them next Sunday.
They're included in this.
No, they're not.
They're not, but I'm meeting with them.
But I suggested to George and George put it in his letter, but, um, if you feel that we need to have, you know, a small spread for some of the volunteers, I don't, I, 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 I can see putting more money in a thousand or two thousand dollars, but with the number of trucks you have, two thousand dollars for each, there's no way. And, and last time, the feeding of the volunteers got out of hand to where anybody who went to the truck ate for free, and then we have a big bill. So I think, you know, if we say, okay, we'll feed these volunteers, there's got to be a way to clamp down and make sure the people who are getting paid or getting fed work the whole day, not just came in for an hour and got lunch and went home, and that was their hour.
Totally agree. Um, I guess, let me back up and just address the water. Um, Anthony had a really great idea of, I don't remember what it's called, if it's buffalo? Okay.
Well, so the problem was in twenty twenty-two is that their buffalo is non-potable water. So that is why that fell apart, because we had planned and then, so I don't know if they have another one that has potable water.
They have.
Yeah.
Community fairs, and so that's what we're asking.
There's, there's also people that do filter water things like Aquafina, and they might be willing to bring and set up a display, because we have a high enough economic, you know, our consumers, that they may want to set up examples, and they have those water things. You can also rent those. They're like the filter things and they have. But I would, back on the food for a minute, I'd rather not give food to us, because we all have enough money to go and buy from whatever truck and give it to the students. In my mind, if, if you're going to give anybody free food, it'd be the volunteers and not us, not the adults.
We could, we could look at doing some, um, almost like a gift card, like a little voucher for a certain amount of money where they could go. But I do think it's, um, coming to the food trucks, and I, I want to turn it over to Rachel, because I know she's had conversations or reached out to several of them. Are there concerns? Because we can't control whether or not the food trucks come, correct, if we?
Correct, yeah, and the, the ones we've heard back from haven't had a minimum. Um, like the Vegan Hood chefs, um, is one. Um, they're excited because they knew the success of our previous events. Um, so that hasn't come up in conversations with food trucks, and the reason why we're sticking to food trucks this year is because last year when we did the food stands, there was a, a lot of effort with the health department to get the right sort of tents and, and that thing, so. I mean, at the end of the day, last year we had a food truck pull out the day of, so we can't really control even if they're going to be there or not. Um, and, unless we, you know, pay them.
We did have a contract, because we had one food truck. Now, the problem with one food truck, even at our smaller event, it was a forty-five minute wait to go get your sandwich.
Yeah.
And we did offer coupons for the students, but we learned later that you need to have different ones for the different items, because people, and we were, people were just handing them out, so if we take that approach, we have to police it a little bit better than we did last time.
I have a proposal.
I don't think this is a council.
I, yeah, I think we, I, here's my.
It's just for, I guess, the money. It's just for, I guess, the money, right, we have to decide.
Yeah, I, I propose that we approve this five thousand dollars and an additional two thousand dollars at the discretion of the E P C and you guys make the decision about food.
That sounds good.
And that way you have your options and you don't have to come in front of the council in an emergency basis like we had to do.
I second that.
Well.
Alright, sounds good.
I'm not sure two thousand is enough.
Alright, wait a second, they may ask for more here.
Yeah, I mean, we.
What's your reasonable number?
This has not been increased for many, 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 many years.
Tight budget.
And I think that the cost of everything has more than doubled in, in those many, many years. And so two thousand dollars is like a drop in the bucket. I'd like to increase it by five.
I don't agree. I like two thousand and they can come back and ask for more.
I don't agree with you either.
Excuse me.
Excuse you.
If, if they, if she, they can come back and say, hey, we've, we've put the pencil to paper and we need another thousand or two.
We don't need them to come back. If they don't spend it all, then it can roll over to the next year. And I think that's.
I don't, I don't agree. Well, my suggestion was two and that's, they asked for none.
Well.
And I thought, and I suggested two right off the bat without even being pushed.
Does somebody wanna make a motion that is modified, modify his proposal to be?
Well, my proposal's on the table still, so.
What was?
I said, let's approve the five thousand and also an additional two, but I think Elizabeth is right that I think we should have flexibility for them. It doesn't, you're not gonna go wild on spending money here. But I think having money to guarantee food for the volunteers means a food truck will a hundred percent come. And what we don't want is someone to, them to back out at the last minute and have no food option. So I think you should be looking at having some kind of guaranteed amount of money for one or two trucks.
Yeah.
So I, I, I am amending my motion to be up to five thousand additional dollars with the understanding that you guys are gonna do your best to not use all of that.
The seconds, alright, all, all in favor?
No, no, no. You can't, you can take public comment first before you.
Okay, alright, let me take public comment.
But also I thought there was a motion and a second, so that one, you need to.
But it was, but it was she then amended hers, yeah.
Correct, but it already, it already had a.
It didn't get voted on.
That's okay, we're trying to get done.
Yeah.
Yes, alright, so any public comment? Any public comment?
I don't see it.
Any online?
Let's move on.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I abstain.
So, alright.
I abstain because I thought two thousand was.
Thank you very much, okay.
Wait, wait. Oh, wait, you do have a public comment?
She always wants to spend more. Every year you look back in the, in the, she always asks for more.
Um, unlike some in the, in, up here and some of the staff, don't listen to every word that comes out of the mayor's mouth, I do. Uh, and the mayor asked me something recently, we do something more to make the event fun and, 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 and publicly. So we're gonna plan with your, with your approval and your help, cuz we'll need your help, to have a battle between a robot lawnmower and sheep lawnmowers.
Like real sheep?
Yeah, 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 real sheep. So, um, there's a program at U C, U C Davis.
Yeah.
Called Sheepmower.
Yeah.
Where the PhD, uh, director of this, Haven, has agreed that she will bring her, her staff and their, 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 uh, their, their fences down. And if we can get two areas on, in a hover plumber, one for the robot and one for the sheep, whether sheep versus, versus robot, uh, you know, mower off for four hours, then you guys can come in and judge who did the better job, et cetera, et cetera. So we got the sheep lined up, we got the people from U C Davis, we got the people from Menlo, but we're gonna need the staff's help, particularly with, with Brightview to make sure that they're on board.
Yeah.
And we'll find a place and support what we're doing cuz we're gonna need some, some logistical help on this.
Yeah.
Will be needed to be cleaned up.
Is there any problem with, with that, George, in terms of?
I don't know.
We don't know.
Don't know enough about it and, um, but we can certainly investigate.
I think it'd be fun, George. I, I think you should go after it and try and make it happen.
Awesome idea.
It's a great idea.
In the right direction, I'll be happy to tell the guys exactly what we need and then they can decide what, we'll be coordinating through Rachel and, and Robert Ovadia.
I'm a dream.
Okay, with you guys, guys.
No, I think it's awesome.
Alright, thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you, Ken.
See you later.
Alright, thank you. We have our meeting on Thursday, so we will get to work, but you can see the plan is, is really already developed.
Thank you for the extra money.
Wait, 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 wait. I want to, um, with permission of the council, I'd like to close out this meeting in memory of Jim Massey. No, there's two different things.
Opened it.
And it was an open, it's highly open, we're gonna close with that, so.
Okay.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Okay. See you later, relegation.